Good evening. As additional voters come in, I note that there are seats to my right. It is 7 o'clock. I’m informed that we have a quorum, and the 2013 Hingham Annual Town Meeting is hereby called to order. We will begin first by hearing an invocation given by the Reverend Dr. Peter Allen. Peter is the senior pastor at the Hingham Congregational Church. Reverend Allen.
Thank you. Please join me for a time of reflection. Please join me in prayer. Spirit of life, great mystery, the one whom we know by many names. You are so much greater than we can imagine, and yet you are deep within each one of us. We are grateful this evening for the opportunity to gather as a community to make important decisions about Hingham, its history, its present quality of life, and its future. We thank you for our extraordinary town, its beauty and its people. We thank you for the dedication of our leaders and of ordinary citizens who’ve prepared for tonight’s discussion and discernment. We pray for clarity. We pray for wisdom. We pray for each other. When faced with disagreement or controversy, we pray that we might be our best selves. We pray for honesty, for patience, and for understanding. No matter what decisions emerge from our deliberations tonight, we pray for healing where there is brokenness, and above all, unity of heart, even in our diversity of opinion. For in you, O Holy One, we are connected to one another. Amen.
Amen. I now invite Keith German, the town’s director of Veteran Services, to come forward to ask us to rise and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, in light of what’s happened this week, I urge you to join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance loud and proud. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. I would now ask Eileen McCracken, the town clerk, to read the call of the meeting. Mrs. McCracken.
Commonwealth of Massachusetts Plymouth SS, to the Constable of the Town of Hingham in the County of Plymouth, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the Town of Hingham qualified to vote in Town Affairs to meet at the high school, 17 Union Street, in said Hingham, Monday, the 22nd day of April, 2013, at 7:00 in the evening. Then and there to act on the following articles, 1 through 41, given under our hands at Hingham this 26th day of March in the year of our Lord, 2013. Laura M. Burns, L. Bruce Rabuffo, Irma H. Slotta, Selectmen of Hingham. By virtue of this within wa— pardon me, warrant, I hereby certify that I have notified and warned the inhabitants of the Town of Hingham qualified to vote in Town Affairs to meet at the time and place indicated in the warrant by causing an attested copy thereof to be published in the Hingham Journal seven days at least before the day appointed for said meeting. It was presented to and posted by the town clerk in the town hall on the 28th day of March, 2013. Kathleen A. Peliquin, Constable of Hingham.
Thank you, Mrs. McCracken. The meeting appears to be duly noticed and properly called. There is this evening in each room a booklet that contains the warrant for this year’s annual town meeting. The warrant booklet includes the reports and the recommendations of the advisory committee, the reports of the Board of Selectmen, the Capital Outlay Committee, the Personnel Board, and the School Department. I would also draw to your attention that we did have a very limited number of warrant booklets in which pagination was incorrect. You can check your booklet, and if yours is incorrect, there are additional booklets available that are properly paginated and complete. I note that I have appointed as assistant moderators this evening three citizens of the town. Andrew McElaney will preside in the auditorium, Mary Jean Omara in the cafeteria as needed, and Victor Bolterra in Room 103 as needed. In addition, I have appointed citizens of the town to serve as tellers for standing votes and to accommodate any ballot votes. I’d say just a word that I shared with the tellers yesterday when we met and impressed upon them the gratitude of the town for the important role that they play to ensure the integrity of the votes that we take other than by voice vote. They play an important role in ensuring the integrity of our open town meeting. As is our tradition, I have admitted to the meeting a number of guests. They are seated in the guest section, which is to my far right, to your left. We welcome them to be with us this evening. Our guests, of course, are not allowed to vote on any matters that come before the town. On behalf of all citizens, I thank our friends at Hingham Community Access Media for providing closed-circuit television for this evening. The meeting is also being taped for later rebroadcast on our local cable channels. I note, of course, that there is no smoking permitted anywhere in the school facility. I also ask you to take a moment to locate the emergency exit nearest you. I invite you at this time to turn off all cell phones, pagers. I ask you to please refrain from using your phone in the course of the meeting and from texting unless there is some emergency or compelling reason to use your communication devices. We are about very important work here, and I would ask that you give the matter of the meeting your full and undivided attention. I draw your attention to the warrant book. You need not look at it now, but on page 58 you will see the detail for the election. We, of course, have an election coming up on Tuesday, April 30. The election is not the customary Saturday election to which we have become accustomed, but because of the statewide election in the primary, our local town election will take place on Tuesday, April 30. You will see that Precincts 1, 2, 3, and 4 will vote here at the high school, 5 and 6 at the middle school, and 5A at Linden Ponds in the Oak Leaf Clubhouse. Mrs. McCracken has asked me to pass along this information. If there is a voter who is unable to vote during the polling hours on Tuesday, the 30, but could come and vote at town hall before that day, you will be able to do so up to and including Monday, the 29th, at noon time. So during the clerk’s regular business office hours, a voter may vote up to Monday, the 29th, at noon time. As my esteemed predecessor, who was in the first row, Mr. O’Donnell, always called to our attention, there is located in your warrant booklet a Talent Bank application form. It’s at the end of the booklet at page 75. I cannot emphasize more strongly the power of volunteerism in this town. Consequently, the selectmen and the moderator welcome, encourage, exhort volunteers to give service to the community on the many appointed town boards and committees. If you are interested, please fill out a Talent Bank application form and either leave it with us here tonight or return it to the selectmen’s office at any time during business hours. Customarily, there are a couple of evening sessions that are hosted at the town hall in which we visit—the selectmen and I—visit with interested citizens, review with them opportunities to serve in the diverse committees that the town maintains for all sorts of service study, and your talents will be well-used and are earnestly sought. That meeting will be well-noted, not only on the town’s website, but in the Hingham Journal, and typically takes place on a couple of convenient nights later in the month of May. I’d like to take a moment to introduce the folks who are up here on this platform. Not all of you may know them, and I will start actually to my extreme right. Susan Murphy is seated at the table to the left of the stenographer. Susan provides legal services to the town, particularly in the area of real estate. Sitting next to Susan is John Coughlin, our newly-appointed town council providing more general legal services to the town. Here at why we euphemistically call the head table, we have—to my right, your left— your Board of Selectmen, Irma Louder, Bruce Rabuffo, and—I’m sorry, I made you a selectman—Eileen McCracken. To my immediate left, Betty Foley, the Assistant Town Administrator, Laura Burns, Chair of the Board of Selectmen, and Ted Alexiades, our Town Administrator. Those hard-working folks to my left are the members of your 15-member advisory committee that provides counsel to the town to this meeting, serves as the finance committee, and works tirelessly to assist all of us in having a meaningful, detailed, and productive town meeting. I would now invite the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, Laura Burns, to come forward to the microphone so that we can remember certain town officials and employees who have passed away since we were last together in 2012.
Former employees of the Town of Hingham who have passed away in the last 12 months: Thomas Keough III, Louise Riley, Barbara Nardo, Stanley Magner, Antonio Rizzotto, Raymond Campbell, Peter Wilson, Francis Kraus Jr., Elizabeth Anderson, Phyllis O’Connell, Albert Julian, Virginia McKee, Ellen Parsons, and Edwin F. Southers. Let’s take a moment to contemplate their service to the town and appreciate their lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Next, I call your attention to the moderator’s message. It is set forth at pages 3 and 4 of your warrant booklet. I invite your attention to that message. It contains important detail for the conduct of the meeting. It should answer most questions that you might have with respect to procedure and highlight some of the relevant town bylaws and other procedures that we traditionally follow in the conduct of the Hingham Town Meeting. I will, however, take a moment to mention in particular the procedures that we use for voting. In accordance with our town bylaw, all votes are first taken as voice votes. It is the duty of the moderator to declare the voice votes. As I go through the warrant with you, I will explain which votes are simple majorities, which votes require what I will call a supermajority, two-thirds, or in one instance, in this year’s meeting, four-fifths. If the moderator is in doubt as to the result of the voice vote or if seven voters should rise and express doubt as to the result that I have declared, then we take a standing vote. We take a standing vote except in the case that a ballot vote is called for instead of a standing vote. So that’s an alternative to a standing vote. And we only take a ballot vote if either the advisory committee or 50 voters promptly call for a ballot vote. Now ballot votes take considerable time, so it has been our practice not to request a ballot vote in the absence of compelling reasons to do so. I note that we have time limits for speakers who speak on any subject. As you will recall, we are limited to speaking twice on any given topic. Six minutes the first time, three minutes the second time. I will tell you when you have one minute remaining, and you should conclude your remarks promptly when I tell you that your time has expired. Remember, if you wish to speak, please rise and seek the attention of the moderator or if you are in one of the rooms other than the gymnasium, the assistant moderator. When you are recognized by the moderator, then you should come to a microphone as expeditiously as you can, and please be certain to speak directly into the microphone. We know in years past it’s often difficult to hear people who were not used to speaking and using microphones. These microphones require you to be quite close to them physically. Some mics not so. These mics require you to have it virtually up against your lips. So if you need to crank it up or down, please do so. I’m sure you have important information to share at the meeting, and it’s really not terribly useful if we can’t hear you. So please, speak directly into the microphone. Make sure that I can see you and recognize you, and each time you speak—if you should speak more than once— state your name and your address at the outset of your remarks each time you speak. As we turn to the business of the meeting, we do so mindful of the terrible pain suffered by so many but one short week ago. We mourn those who lost their lives in a senseless bombing and in its aftermath. We grieve for those who today suffer from physical, emotional, and spiritual harm so cruelly inflicted upon innocents and ask that they be freed of their suffering and given whatever aid they require. We give thanks for those who responded immediately and selflessly to help others: uniformed officers, medical and emergency personnel, race officials, and our fellow citizens. We recognize today our own police officers, who as part of the region’s Rapid Response Team went into harm’s way to aid in the manhunt that followed Monday’s awful events: Lieutenant David Jones, Lieutenant John Norquitas, Sergeant David Horton, and Officer Jeffrey Kilroy. May the record reflect our gratitude to them and to all others who protect and serve both here and abroad. As we undertake the business of this community and address issues of common concern, let us do so as one, engaging in the thoughtful and civil discourse that has long been the hallmark of Hingham Open Town Meeting. We have work to do tonight, and we are grateful for the opportunity to begin that work together in peace. Article 1. It’s at page 16 in your books. Article 1 requires for its adoption a majority vote. I will read the recommended motion that Betty Fernandez, 1142 Main Street, be elected a member of the committee to have charge of the income of the Hannah-Lincoln Whiting Fund for a term of three years, and that Alan Peralta, Anderson Road, be elected a trustee of the Bathing Beach in accordance with Chapter 75 of the Massachusetts Acts of 1934. That is the recommended motion of the advisory committee. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It is a unanimous vote. Article 2. Article 2 is an article that we see in a similar format each year. I will abstract the recommended motion of the advisory committee, that the town in accordance with and to the extent only permitted by General Laws, Chapter 91, Section 29, assume liability for all damages that may be incurred by certain work to be performed by the Department of Conservation and Recreation of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. That is the recommended motion of the advisory committee. Is there discussion? Hearing none, we come to vote. All those in favor of the recommended motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. It too is unanimous vote. Article 3. I will note an amendment to the recommended motion under Article 3. In the bold text which begins “recommended,” and those are the motions that seek action under the question that is composed in the article—comprised in the article. In the fifth line, there was one committee left out. And it is the Committee popularly known as the Government Study Committee, the official name of which is the 2010 Committee to Review the Efficiency and Effectiveness of Town Government. So that committee was included in the text of the article but not in the text of the recommended motion, and of course, it is motions upon which we act. So you can pencil in the 2010 Committee to Review the Efficiency and Effectiveness of Town Government. So this recommended motion would receive the reports of those various town committees and would continue all of those committees except for the aforementioned 2010 Committee to Review the Efficiency and Effectiveness of Town Government. That committee has completed its work. We will have recommended motions from that committee this evening, but at the completion of the 2013 meeting, that committee will be discharged with our gratitude. I also note before coming to vote on the recommended motion under Article 3 that there is available both physically here in the hall tonight and electronically on the town’s website the interim report of the committee that is studying the potential acquisition of the water company, but there is no action tonight being proposed on anything to do with that matter. So with that one amendment to add the official name of the Government Study Committee to the text of the recommended motion under Article 3, I ask whether there is any debate. Hearing none, we come to vote. All those in favor of the recommended motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. That too is unanimous vote. We now come to a series of three articles that have to do with spending money, and I recognize Karen Johnson. Karen is the Chair of our advisory committee, and Karen will give an overview of the town’s operating budget and other appropriations that we will be asked to act upon in the next several articles. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Karen Johnson, 16 Berkeley Circle for the Advisory Committee. Members of the Board of Selectmen, members of elected and appointed boards, my colleagues on the advisory committee, guests of the meeting, and to you, Town Meeting 2013, good evening. I feel both lucky and humbled to stand before you this evening and for the first time in a long time, present to you a budget for fiscal year 2014 unanimously recommended by the advisory committee. That budget is found in Articles 4, 5, and 6 in your warrant book. It is a balanced budget. I feel lucky because this balanced budget is based on the work done by Boards of Selectmen, advisory committees, and town meetings past. Because without that historic resolve to make tough choices, especially in the face of the severe economic issues presented over the last several years, I would not be standing before you today not only with a balanced budget for FY14 but a forecast that shows a positive bottom line in the out years. That forecast can be found at page 11 of your warrant books. Make no mistake, we got here because we were willing to make some tough financial decisions. To be clear, however, the weight of those decisions was borne by our town departments and their staffs: our police, our fire, our teachers, public works personnel, town administrative staff, and so many others have done more with less, budget cycle after budget cycle. We have heard loud and clear during our budget hearings this past year that this approach could not be sustained. We remain the town we are because of the professionalism of all our town departments. So to each of our department heads and their respective staff members, on behalf of a very grateful town, I say thank you. I feel humbled because this budget is based on the work of many others. When you pick up your glossy warrant book, you hold in your hands many thousands of staff and volunteer hours considering, debating, and ultimately recommending for your consideration an economic path forward for the town. I would be remiss if I did not give a shout-out to the advisory committee. When I moved to town 20-plus years ago—yes, I am a newcomer— I remember sitting in the audience wondering how in the world could the advisory committee make so many recommendations? Little did I know. What you should know is that the advisory committee is your eyes and ears. We do the diligence on every number and every proposal contained in your warrant book before coming to consensus on our recommendations to you. The budget before you tonight, coupled with certain of the articles contained in other areas of the warrant, seeks to address a balance of priorities for the town. We need to provide services to our residents. We need to take care of the things we own, and we need to be mindful of our property tax rate. You will be asked to make decisions tonight and tomorrow night—hopefully that’s it— which touch on each of these points. First, when we started the budgeting process back in September, the budget message to all of the departments was “level services.” And what that means is, we ask them to consider what they’re doing during FY13 and price that very same operation in FY14 dollars. In addition, we ask them to tell us what else they might need to do their jobs. The budget that the advisory committee recommends to you includes about half a million dollars of strategic additions to various budgets, namely in the areas of personnel training, books for the library, technology support, and for the schools, the restoration of assistant principals at the elementary school level. Some of these items reflect the restoration of services lost to the town since 2008, while some of the additions are in response to the growing number of unfunded federal and state mandates for which we continue to pull the laboring oar. Second, the 2014 budget includes increased allocations to meet capital needs, both as part of the Capital Outlay Line item as well as allocations for road repair within the budget for the Department of Public Works. The Capital Outlay allocation for next year includes study money that will be used to consider facility and equipment issues for the fire department in particular. The High School Fields articles also address capital needs of the town. Finally, lest you think we sit on the third floor of town hall and think only about spending your money, I’d like to assure you that we also think about trying to relieve your tax burden in a number of ways. We have a group of AdCom members currently consulting with the Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator on borrowing assumptions and costs. We recommend the town meeting endorse the selectmen’s tax relief proposals contained in the warrant, including increases to the tax work-off programs as well as direct tax relief to you, the residents of the town, utilizing meals tax revenue. The only town in the Commonwealth to undertake this kind of tax relief. In addition, we recommend the purchase of land off Recreation Park Drive to continue the selectmen’s plan for light commercial development in South Hingham. I have learned in the past several years that sound municipal budgeting is a balancing act. This budget and this warrant achieve that balance for 2014. In closing, I would like to thank so many of you for your participation in the many public meetings that preceded tonight. Your thoughtful dialogue has informed us and inspired us. We look forward to continuing the conversation tonight. Finally, the tragedy at the Boston Marathon and the uncertainty that engulfed all of us just last Monday evening makes me ever more mindful of the luxury we are afforded at town meeting: the luxury to speak our minds and cast our ballots. Thank you so much for being part of this meaningful expression of self-governance, and thanks for your attention. Godspeed.
Article 4. The recommended motion of Article 4 relates to the report of the Personnel Board and also changes to the Personnel bylaw and classification and salary plan, all of which are on record with the town clerk. Is there discussion? Hearing none, we come to vote. All those in favor of the recommended motion on Article 4, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. It is a unanimous vote. Article 5. Article five. Article five would fix the salaries of certain town officers, all as is set forth more particularly in the text of the recommended motion of the advisory committee, is their discussion. Hearing none, we come to vote on Article five. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It is a unanimous vote. I also note again, much like church, there are various seats closer to the front. When it comes time to vote, you're going to need a seat. So if you wish to take it now, you will be grateful when the time comes. We now come to Article six. Now Article six is our operating budget, and of course, takes up several pages of your warrant booklet beginning at page 18. We have a traditional practice that we will observe tonight that allows us to go through what is a complicated and multi-part article rather expeditiously. And I will read the procedure that we follow. The recommended motion of the advisory committee is set forth in its report, and it is set out at page 18. So you see in the boldface under the article, the recommended motion of the advisory committee. And that recommended motion contains within it all of the fiscal recommendations that you see to the far right column. So you can see by way of contrast and comparison what was expended in fiscal 12, what was appropriated in fiscal 13, and what is being recommended for fiscal 14, which is the year that we are about to begin. So that's what you see on pages 18 through page 23. Right-hand column is the specific appropriation recommended for fiscal 14. Fiscal 14 begins July 1, 2013, and runs through June 30, 2014. I will, as we have done for many years, read each amount to be appropriated for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2013, as recommended in each case, as Ms. Johnson has just explained, by your advisory committee. If you would like to raise a question or an objection with regard to any specific item, or if you should like to propose a higher amount, or a lower amount, or no amount, after I read that item and the dollar amount that the advisory committee has recommended, you simply need to say "hold" so that we will hear you. You don't need to bellow, just your good indoor voice. Then I will mark "hold" next to that item in this book, which I will say I inherited from Mr. O'Donnell, the physical book. We'll put the held item aside until we have completed reading the entire list. Then we'll take up items that have not been held, as to which no question has been raised, and we will vote on all of those items together. We will then go back and take up each of the items which have been held, one by one, allow discussion, questions and debate, and any alternative motions with regard to any of those items. So we will now turn to page 18, and I will read each line item and the recommended amount. First, the article. I note that there is a change in the text of the article. It has been put out in the supplemental report that accompanied the printed book, so you should have a separate item. In case you did not pick it up, let me read it to you. In the second to the last line of the boldface recommended motion on page 18, just in typing this recommended motion, some text was dropped, so let me read it to you. In that second to the last line, which begins "amount or portion thereof appropriated to a subaccount," you would need to insert the following lines. "And included in a numbered account, as set forth below, may be transferred to another subaccount." That is the full extent of the additional language. I'll read it again. Second to the last line, after the word "subaccount," you would insert "and included in a numbered account, as set forth below, may be transferred to another subaccount." And then it would continue under the same numbered account with the approval of the Board of Selectmen and the advisory committee. So I will now go through these. If you wish to, hold any particular item, call out "hold." Selectmen payroll $424,006. Expenses $33,040. Reserve fund $550,000. Town accountant payroll $348,021. Expenses $12,555. Capital outlay $190,359, $118,000 from the trust fund. Audit $55,000. Information technology $123,698. Assessors payroll $204,804. Expenses $11,587. Consulting $69,800. Map maintenance $6,000. Treasurer-collector payroll $304,647. Expenses $44,308. Capital outlay $6,000. Tax titles $10,000. Legal services $232,000. Payroll in town meetings $2,692. Expenses $28,300. Town clerk $169,837. Expenses $7,707. Elections payroll $6,850. Expenses $10,485. Eight forty-five. Community planning payroll $604,357. Expenses $56,857. Bear Cove Park payroll $16,233. Expenses $5,333. Town Hall payroll $188,856. Expenses $349,617. Capital outlay $103,651, $23,651 from available reserves. Grand Army Memorial Hall $12,146. Police Department payroll $4,525,219. Overtime $4,34812. Expenses $317,500. Capital outlay $157,750, $18,000 from available reserves. Fire payroll $4,306,420. Overtime $474,395. Expenses $380,875. Capital outlay $64,000 even. Dispatch services expenses $675,000. Animal control payroll $50,508. Expenses $3700. Harbor master payroll $132,794. Expenses $43,516. Public safety utilities, emergency water $364,424. Street lighting $183,000 even. Education, school department payroll $33,787,513. Expenses $8,050,715. Capital outlay $550,734. Town engineering payroll $211,689. Expenses $19,000. Road building and construction $300,000. Recreation, highway, tree and park payroll $1,763,745. Overtime $52,412. Expenses $398,164. Capital outlay $362,000 even. Snow removal $504,325. Road maintenance $282,835. Landfill recycling payroll $436,748. Overtime $21,760. Expenses $859,481. Capital outlay $65,000. The sewer commission payroll $285,612. Overtime $17,729. Expenses $238,421. Capital outlay $162,500. Engineering $10,000. MWRA charges $1,588,865. The Hull Inter-Municipal Agreement $120,799. The sum of $2,406,197 to be refunded from sewer revenues. The Health Department payroll $288,990. Expenses $19,735. Elder Services payroll $188,737. Expenses $21,983. Capital outlay $25,000. Tax work-off program $60,000. Veteran Services payroll $77,924. Expenses $4,334. Health imperatives $2,500. The South Shore Women's Center $3,500. Library payroll $1,223,94. Expenses $256,016. Capital outlay $144,428. Recreation Commission payroll $78,773. Trustees of the Bathing Beach payroll $17,035. Expenses $5,825. Celebrations $10,920. Country Club Fund $2,213,456. Such sum to be funded from country club revenues. Debt Service $7,368,224. $3,568,485 is excluded from Proposition Two and a Half. Employee Benefits Group Insurance $6,305,485. Other post-retirement employee benefits $1,172,000. Contributory Retirement $3,718,860. Workers' Compensation $250,000. Unemployment $50,000. Mandatory Medicare $714,420. Property and Liability Insurance Coverage $381,000. Claims and incidentals $10,950. The grand total for the operating budget $90,295,835. Hearing no holds, we come to vote on the operating budget. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. As with the advisory committee, it is a unanimous vote. We now come to Article seven. Article seven is the first of four articles that relate to the Phase Two of the High School Fields Improvement Project. I told all of the folks who were integrally involved in this that I would make some opening comments to ensure that all of us know what is before us, that we understand what we are being invited to vote on, and a series of articles should be brought clear by the comments I make and the presentations that will be made by the proponents of the several articles. So again, we are now about to come to seven, eight, nine, and 10, all of which relate in some way to the High School Fields Improvement Project. Article seven is intended to offer an alternative to the project as put forth by the school committee. That project that is proposed by the school committee is contained effectively in Articles eight, nine, and 10, but the base of the school committee proposal is Article eight. Because these four articles all relate to the same matter, and because Article seven is being proposed as an alternative to the project that is proposed by the school committee, I will allow debate under Article seven, not only as to matters that relate specifically to it, but also to matters that relate to Articles eight, nine, and 10. As you will hear in the motion to be offered under Article seven, that project is proposed to be one that is smaller in scope than that proposed under Article eight. The Article seven project, I'll call it, will allow for the installation of an artificially-surfaced field or other amenities only if funded by private sources. That is, as it is proposed right now. The Article seven project would limit permanent bleacher seating to accommodate no more than 1,000 spectators, and will expressly exclude the erection of light poles. Now Article eight, by contrast, proposes a larger project, Article seven a smaller one. Article nine asks whether the town will appropriate funds for the installation of artificial turf on the so-called multipurpose field. Article seven, by contrast, would require that that cost, if it is to be incurred, the cost of artificial turf, if it is to be incurred, it would be borne exclusively by private sources. So Article nine asks, will the town pay for that? Article seven says turf would be permissible under the Article seven project if it were privately financed. That is, as the motion I have before me currently reads. Article 10 asks whether the town will allow the installation of four 80-foot light poles at designated locations to accommodate the lighting of the proposed multipurpose field. Notably, Article 10 does not ask for funding of the installation of those light poles. It asks whether the town will allow their installation and erection at designated locations on the plan for the multipurpose field as proposed under the school committee proposal. Again, it does not seek appropriation. Article seven, by contrast, would expressly preclude field lighting. So no matter who might pay for it, Article seven would not allow it. It is on account of those alternative choices that the meeting is being invited to consider, choices that are significantly different and, to a significant extent, mutually exclusive. It is on account of that that I will allow debate that touches upon each of the elements of these four articles. I hope that that is clear. Now, when we come to vote, then we will vote sequentially. We will vote first on seven, later on eight, later on nine, later on 10. And obviously, the precise action that we will take will, to some extent, depend upon what we've just done. But I'm sure we will all understand fully and fairly what we are being offered as opportunities to consider. So broadly stated, we will now begin debate on the High School Fields projects, as they are proposed under seven, eight, nine, 10. It may well be that we will need additional conversation or discussion when we come to vote on eight. vote on Eight, when we come to vote on Nine, and when we come to vote on Ten. I would hope, however, and expect that the discussion and the debate that we are about to begin will have largely, if not entirely, covered the issues as they will present themselves in Eight, Nine, and Ten. It's currently about ten minutes before Eight. I would hope, looking at what we have before us, that in an hour's time or so, that we can cover what needs to be covered so that every voter understands fully what is before him or her. I know that there are many voters who wish to speak on these important issues, and we look forward to hearing from you. As I said, it is imperative that you come to the closest microphone that is available to you and that you speak right into it. Don't be bashful. You need to be heard. If you, if you need, as I said, to adjust the microphone so it's closer to your mouth, don't be bashful. If you need help, someone will help you. It's not complicated. So now we come to Consider Seven. As is our tradition, I ask that all members of the meeting listen attentively to your fellow citizens and that we refrain from applause or other exhibitions of support or contrary feelings. So we now come to Article Seven. Article Seven, as I said, would propose an alternative to Article Eight. It proposes a project that you can see described in Article Seven. The recommended motion of the advisory committee is for no action, but I have before me an affirmative motion that has been proposed by Mrs. Rockoff and others who sought this article and petitioned for its inclusion in the warrant, and I will now read it to you. The affirmative motion that has been proposed under Article Seven reads as follows. Recommended that the town appropriate a sum not to exceed two million, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars to be expended under the direction of the school committee to fund Phase Two of the High School Fields Improvement Project located at Zero and Seventeen Union Street. The project, quote, end quote, cap P, project. The project with a capital P may include purchase and installation of an artificially-surfaced field or other amenities only if funded by private sources. The project will limit permanent bleacher seating to accommodate no more than one thousand spectators and expressly excludes erection of any light poles. To meet this said appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow said sum under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Forty-four, or any other enabling authority upon such terms as the town treasurer and the Board of Selectmen shall determine. Is there a second on that motion? Motion has been duly seconded. We will begin debate under it. I note that this motion, because it involves borrowing, will require for its adoption a two-thirds majority. So we'll now have debate under Article Seven. Our first speaker is about to come forward. I recognize Ben Burnham. You have six minutes, Ben.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Ben Burnham. I live at eleven Downing Street. We all agree our athletes are playing on substandard fields. There are drainage issues, dangerous and non-compliant bleachers, insufficient parking, and gender inequities. We are the proponents for the fields. Warren Article Seven creates a first-class facility. We authored Warren Article Seven based on a two thousand and eleven town meeting. That Warren article stated, and I quote, "The field committee, the school committee, will provide a base recommendation for addressing drainage and parking issues, replacing the bleachers, and providing a multipurpose game facility," end quote. The estimated cost was expected to be between two million and two point seven five million. We are bringing the base recommendation to you here tonight by removing some of the luxuries. And we could do that and still create a fantastic facility. We volunteered to bring you these, this base recommendation. We're well-versed on the subject. Our members have been on the various ad hoc field study committees dating back to two thousand and five. Article Seven is fiscally responsible, respectful of Hingham's rich history, and deferential to the center Hingham neighborhoods. Article Seven will right-size the facility. We acknowledge current attendance levels and build in some extra growth. Fixed bleacher seating at the multipurpose field is the driving force for the facility. The plumbing fixture count is tied directly to those fixed seats. The amenities building is sized to accommodate the plumbing fixtures. By being honest about our true attendance levels, you right-size the facility. The appropriation amount is two point seven five million. Approval of Article Seven puts an allowance on the project. Now, there are others who have worked very hard to raise substantial funds privately. It's a public-private partnership. You'll hear more about that later. Although we are told the donations are strictly for the school committee Warren articles, we are hopeful the donations would be applied to whatever article passes here tonight. After all, this is about the fields. Article Seven adopts the fundamental designs made by the engineer. We improve the drainage. We expand and upgrade the parking in the southern parking lot. We permanently dismantle the dangerous and non-compliant bleachers at Michelson Field. And we build a multipurpose game field with ADA-compliant bleachers, ADA-compliant press box, and an amenities building. This is done for the two point seven five million dollar estimate. Now, over the last few months, you may have heard phrases about our group, like not vetted through town process and no engineering approval or firm bids. Not vetted through town process. One cannot come before you tonight without first presenting to the Board of Selectmen and also the advisory committee. That is town process. No engineering approval or firm bids. This is true. We did not have the benefit of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of taxpayer money. When we asked if we could work directly with the engineering firm to help develop our plan further, we were told no. As a result, to create our estimate, we used the same detailed line-item spreadsheet that the school committee used to estimate their plan. We are a community who cares for each other. We are all ingredients that constitute Hingham. We participate together and maintain self-reliance regardless of income and social status. These characteristics are essential for our town. We ask for a yes vote on Article Seven because it's sensible for the budget and the taxpayers. It's sensitive to our historic postcard town. It right sizes the facility for current and future use. It creates a first-rate facility for the kids in the community. Article Seven is a win-win for everybody.
Continuing with the proponents of Article Seven, Mark Rockoff.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Mark Rockoff, and I live at thirty-six Pleasant Street. I've been a resident of Hingham for thirty years and have raised three children here, all having actively participated in sports from youth leagues through college. So I appreciate the importance of having good athletic facilities in our town. However, I would like to explain the reasons why I and many others support Article Seven and strongly believe that lights should not be a part of the high school athletic field renovation project. Can I have the first slide? This is a rendition of the new multipurpose field that has been widely disseminated, and I'm sure you'll see more of it later from the school, school committee. It looks lovely, but it is, in some ways, misleading. In particular, the four eighty-foot light towers hardly stand out since they're shown from an aerial vantage point. But let's look at eighty-foot light towers in a more realistic manner. Next slide. This picture was prepared for town meeting in two thousand and one, when seventy-foot light towers were proposed adjacent to the high school and rejected by the town citizens. Now even taller light towers are being planned purportedly because they would result in less light scatter. But eighty-foot light towers are the height of an eight-story building, none of which exist in the entire town of Hingham. These structures will tower over homes as well as over the tree line and over many of Hingham's iconic church steeples. Even when not lit during the daytime, they will be widely visible, and when illuminated at night, they will be seen from miles away. Is this really the new skyline that the citizens of Hingham desire? In addition, everyone should be aware that these lights are not just for some special occasions, such as a Veterans Day game or a few Friday night high school football games. The school committee's proposal, which was approved by a slim three-to-two majority of the town's planning board, authorizes use of these lights more than a hundred seventy nights a year, seven days a week, all fall and all spring, for practices as well as games, even for non-school events. More than seventy of these nights amplified sound is also permitted. In addition, some individuals have advocated for renting this facility out to other groups to generate revenue to the town. Is this really appropriate for any residential area in Hingham? Actually, the town has rejected lights at the high school before. In two thousand and one, the planning committee commented, and I quote, "The unique qualities of Union Street, a designated scenic roadway in the heart of, in the heart of the high school fields, would in all likelihood be overwhelmed by implementation of this plan, with negative consequences on aesthetics, safety, and the quality of life for the residents of the surrounding area in particular and the townspeople in general," unquote. More recently, lights have also been rejected by the town in other residential areas around the Carlson Fields and on Ward Street. We should not continually be pitting one residential area in Hingham against another. Outdoor nighttime athletic events lit up by huge light towers with the associated noise and traffic would establish an inappropriate precedent for any residential area in town. Everyone here tonight, especially those who do not live in the area of the high school, should seriously consider whether they would want this in their neighborhood, or whether they truly want to impose something on their fellow citizens that they would not want imposed on them. Finally, some claim we need lights at our high school because, because other towns with which our athletes compete have lights. But lighted fields in many of these other towns are not in the middle of scenic historic residential areas. Even more importantly, it should be noted that many of the outstanding high schools in our area do not have lighted fields, including Milton Academy, Nobles, Thayer, and many others. Instead, they value education over athletic amenities, and their student-athletes seem to do just fine, generally playing their sports in the afternoon after classes and leaving the evenings for dinner and their homework. In conclusion, if you want to fix the high school fields, you have two main options. I encourage you to vote for the first, for Article Seven, which does not focus on unnecessary amenities and prevents the installation of eighty-foot light towers, thereby moving outdoor athletic activities from daytime to evening. However, if Article Seven does not pass, I urge you to vote no on Articles Eight, Nine, and Ten. While defeat of all these articles would result in a delay in renovating the high school fields--
You have thirty seconds.
Thank you. It would be far preferable to develop, to develop a better way to complete this project rather than inappropriately spend millions of taxpayer dollars now on proposals that have been so uncompromising and so divisive to the town. Thank you very much.
Mr. DeGreeve.
Norman DeGrev, fifteen Downing Street.
Speak up.
Really? Norman DeGrev, fifteen Downing Street. Thank you. How will we prepare our kids for the future? That's what we're talking about. How will we invest our money to best prepare our kids in a world that is rapidly changing? That's our responsibility as parents. I am a sports fan. I played sports all through high school and into college. I know firsthand the benefits that they bring, understanding teamwork, discipline, sacrifice, what it means to win, and, more importantly, what it means to lose. We need to fix our fields so that more of our kids can have these great life experiences. However, we have a crisis in our town, and it's not the fields, it's the high school. In two thousand and twelve, Boston Magazine ranked fifty high schools in the Boston area based on thirteen different dimensions, including student-teacher ratios, percentage of students going on to college, AP classes, MCAS scores, and SAT scores. Of the fifty schools, Hingham is not in the top five, the top ten, the top fifteen, the top twenty, the top twenty-five, not even the top thirty. It's thirty-second. That's eighteenth from the bottom. Also in two thousand and twelve, Newsweek ranked Hingham High School as six hundred and sixth in the country. Now really, how many of us want our children going to the six-hundredth-best college in the country? Should we expect anything less from our high school? So, in light of that, how much should we invest in our athletic facilities? Should we, as Article Eight suggests, put our money into a stadium with all the bells and whistles, including a pavilion? Or should we, as Article Seven suggests, address all the key needs originally identified by the ad hoc committee? Fix the drainage problems? Get new bleachers? Expand the parking? And build a Class A multipurpose field in a way that still leaves over a million dollars for us to invest in other areas like academics that will help prepare our kids for the future? Make no mistake, Article Eight has left a lot of committees split on its value. I was on the ad hoc committee that studied the project, and we are split. The planning board is split three-to-two. The selectmen are split two-to-one. Several members of the advisory committee oppose it. The Historic District Commission is unanimously opposed to it. Article Eight is the platinum solution at a time when we desperately need to invest in academics. That is what Article Seven allows us to do. Invest in a Class A facility and a more holistic view of what's needed for our kids to succeed. Voting for Article Seven is voting for our kids' future.
So further debate on Article Seven. Yes, sir. Please come to the microphone and explain your-- Please come to the microphone and explain your name and your residential address.
My name is Al Engelhardt, Ninety-Six Martins Lane. Today's Proposition Seven versus Eight, Nine, and Ten is sort of like yin and yang. You choose one, or maybe you don't choose seven, but clearly seven is an alternative to Eight, Nine, and Ten. My thoughts on this, there are many, many different arguments, but here are some of my takes. How many, look around you in the surrounding towns, and see how many of them northwest and south of us who have allowed the deterioration of the scenic and fabric, scenic and residential fabrics of their neighborhoods? I believe especially the lights will deteriorate the fabric in our area. Another thing, how many of these pro-large, commercial-like, athletic-complex advocates really live close? I see signs all over the town, everywhere. I don't see a whole lot around the immediate area on Union Street. How many of the advocates live an eighth of a mile away from the proposed Eight, Nine, and Ten installations? How about a half a mile away? How about three-quarters of a mile away? Lots of traffic? If we hear what I think I hear about the lights, the lights could be on one-third of a year? Possibly. And lastly, how many of the vehement advocates tonight for Eight, Nine, and Ten will vote for this, for good or for bad, and then flee? They got their thing. Are they really interested in just this issue, or are they interested in the whole town process? Thank you very much.
Yes, Mrs. Jones.
Linda Jones, Eighty Thistle Patch Way. I stand here tonight because I must. I'm not usually a public person, but this issue has sufficiently set my belly on fire to make me want to speak to you all. I've attended town board meetings and am angered by the undue influence of the Hingham Sports Partnership throughout our town boards and committees. I'm sickened by the potential misuse of town funds and what feels like skewed priorities regarding our kids' education. And I'm heartsick over the divisiveness that has prepped into our amazing little town where we usually care for and respect each other and the special quality of every neighborhood. Let me be very clear: I do favor fixing the high school playing fields. I do value sports programs, having two grown daughters who benefited from participation and one who continues to coach high school tennis, and two grandsons in town for whom I wish the same. We voted in 2011 to spend as much as 2.75 million to renovate the fields, and I wholeheartedly support that expenditure as long as the drainage issues are thoroughly addressed in the process. Otherwise, think about this: anything we do to the fields will potentially be ruined. The drainage issues must be thoroughly addressed. But we must also practice fiscal responsibility. The school budget, all in, exceeds fifty percent of the entire town budget. I have no problem with that. We know that a solid school system maintains our real estate values. But I would like to believe that what Hingham values most is the quality of the academic programs offered, not just sports. When we vote to spend so much on an oversized, gold-plated sports complex, what message does that send to the Hingham student who does not play sports? Are we also spending millions on the arts or innovative science labs? If so, I'm not aware of it. Why must the jocks always get all the goodies? And in this case, it's only some of our athletes who will benefit. We have been told that the school committee's proposal to spend over four million dollars will not raise our taxes. Well, if you believe that, I have a bridge to sell you. As was so aptly pointed out in a recent letter to the Hingham Journal, it's not the tooth fairy who will pay for this mega-sports complex, for which we must borrow money over a fifteen-year period. The money to service that debt is in the town coffers, and it was ours, paid in taxes. I would feel ever so much better if those dollars were more fairly shared with our other town services or used creatively to continue to reduce the tax rate for those in town who are on fixed incomes. We've heard tonight that preparations for the town budget involved every department's best efforts to tighten their belts, including the school department, by the way. So how does that make them feel? The money spent for the proposed debt must also be made available to meet the needs of other departments: fire, police, town works, parks and trees, elder services, veterans, et cetera. And we're building a new middle school, which we know will increase our taxes. No one seems to be talking also about the ongoing costs related to the proposed expanded nighttime usage at the renovated fields if the lights are approved. What are we going to do about added police details needed to deal with the huge influx of traffic, both auto and pedestrian, not to mention the safety issues that this will bring on? And who's going to pick up all the trash from all the additional usage? I live very near these fields, and I can't tell you how many hours I have spent personally detrashing our roadways because many of our students don't realize the water bottles are trash. So, it's already bad enough. There's a lot of robbing Peter to pay Paul in the wind, it seems to me. How can we possibly justify spending such a huge amount on a facility that, yes, will make an elite minority of our kids very happy and a lot of their parents, but cause others to do without? Voters, you do have a choice tonight. I encourage you to vote yes on Article Seven. Thank you.
Laura Burns, Ninety-Six Hershey Street, for the Board of Selectmen. Some have expressed concern about the proposed project because of a worry about the impact it might have on property taxes. So on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, I want to explain how a school fields project, any school fields project which town meeting might approve, would be financed. Whether you approve any project or no project at all, there will be no impact on your property taxes either way. A school fields project would be paid for by bonding it and by paying the principal and interest out of the currently projected operating budget. The central fire station expansion and the construction of the new DPW facility were funded this way. There was no impact to your property taxes from those projects either. The town expects to put a certain amount of our operating budget towards our capital needs every year. The more mundane and smaller projects are implemented as part of the budget which you just approved under Article Six. A project of this size, we generally deal with in an article on its own in order to give it the appropriate attention, but it will be funded out of the operating budget just like all the smaller projects. Of course, it's true that if we spend the money on this project, they won't be available for something else. But when the Board of Selectmen and the advisory committee recommend a project of this size to you, we're saying that the need has risen to the point where this is the highest priority for funding right now over all other possibilities, in our opinion. We have these funds available due to prudent fiscal management, and this is where we think we should spend them. If no fields project is approved tonight, the funds set aside for this purpose will fall to the bottom line, join our fund balance, and be available for other projects in the next budget. But no matter which project you approve, or if you approve no project at all, there will be no impact on your property taxes. Citizens are rightly concerned about the impact of property taxes from the middle school building project. The tax increase to pay for it was approved at town meeting and at the polls, but that doesn't make it any easier to pay. The Board of Selectmen has been working for the last year on a plan to mitigate the impact of that coming tax increase, which we will present to you under Articles Thirteen and Fourteen. The cost of this project, however, can be covered in the current operating budget, and if approved, it will have no effect on your taxes. Thank you.
Further debate? Yes, sir, in the rear.
My name is Steve Briggs. I live at Five Seventy-three Main Street in Hingham. Is this pretty honest? My wife Mary and I moved here five years ago. We're from the area, and we wanted to live in this town because it's so beautiful. And we've loved it for a long time, being from eastern Massachusetts. We love its charm, the antiquity. It's an absolutely stunning town we have. And when I say "we" have, I kind of mean that because we feel like guests sometimes. That said, we do have a house that's very old. Our major is one hundred and ninety years old, and we fix it constantly. We love it. We never want to move into another house. We aren't the only town that is really, really amazing and beautiful and historic and charming. Other towns like Lexington and Concord and Wellesley and Ducksbury and Cohasset, and the list goes on, they all have adequate, appropriate, proper, current fields. We don't have a monopoly on charming antiquity, history, tradition. We don't. We don't. The proposals that exist, Eight, Nine, and Ten, are thoughtful, that have been vetted by dozens and dozens of hours by responsible community people, fellow townspeople, lots and lots of meetings, lots of thought, and lots of people who live really close, really awful.
Put up many, many pictures of things that advocate our position, but we can't replace countless hours of time that people have put into this. All of that said, I am absolutely for Articles Eight, Nine, and Ten. If history has taught us nothing, we can't allow our kids not to compete appropriately. We can't allow our kids not to have resources that other kids in other towns really close by have. I don't disagree with the need for curriculum that's appropriate, facilities that are appropriate, other things that we're not voting for today. That's not on the ballot right now. What is on the ballot is Eight, Nine, and Ten. We cannot let our kids be stuck in the past, even in the present. Please, can we move forward and get these done? Thank you very much.
Ms. Conaty?
My name is Margaret Conaty. I live at Fifteen Daly Road and have been a Hingham resident for thirty-seven years. I am the Athletic Director at Hingham High School. I'd like to preface my comments tonight by thanking this community for saying yes in October 2011 to a new track, restored tennis courts, and the resources to continue to develop the plans for our fields that will be presented tonight. So thank you for your generosity. Throughout my thirty-seven years as an Athletic Director, I have attended thousands of games, both home and at our opponent's school. This allows me to watch our student-athletes compete, but it also allows me to witness how other schools manage their games and facilities. It gives me great ideas of best practice. So it is with the years of experience that I offer you these comments. I have been heavily involved in the planning of the fields with the ad hoc committee and would like to point out the differences of Article Seven and Article Eight, Nine, and Ten, and how it impacts interscholastic athletics at Hingham High. First, with Article Seven, this field only accommodates games during daylight hours. This presents a major scheduling program, as I have multiple teams needing to play at the same time. I would need to have multiple multipurpose fields if Article Seven is allowed to be built. However, if that field had lights and synthetic turf, I could plan a game at 3:30 and then another game at either 5:30 or have a practice. This field needs to be a synthetic field because, as I have stated for the last year, field hockey, a girls' sport, cannot coexist on a natural grass field with football or with soccer, just because the nature of those sports chews it up. Field hockey needs to be played on a very safe, smooth surface. Our field hockeys, our field hockey opponents will actually refuse to play at Hingham High School if they have to play on a field that has been played on by the football team. A natural grass field will exclude our girls' program once again, and that is a gender inequity. Next, I'd like you to envision this field. It's going to be, there is no track around it. It's going to be nice and tight. The stands are going to be right up. It's going to be great as far as from a vantage point from a fan. However, Article Seven proposes to cut our two-thousand-seat stands that we have now, cut that in half, and put them all on the same side. So we're going to be playing Weymouth or Ducksbury, Situate. Their fans will come over, and we're going to say to them, "You need to sit with the Hingham fans. Your cheerleaders need to be there, and you're sitting behind the Hingham team." How do you think that's going to go? That will not go well. I brought this to the Patriot League Athletic Directors' principals, and they are very concerned that we will be putting their fans in harm's way. They ask, "Our fans, they need to be able to come and cheer for their team behind their team." It's a recipe for disaster. So I plead to you to vote no on Article Seven just for that safety reason alone. The next. Article Seven is planned with the idea that we draw only eight hundred fans to our games. It's just totally inaccurate, even though we currently play at the absolute worst time to draw fans for high school athletics. That's Saturday afternoon. We frequently have well over a thousand fans at our games, and if you've ever gone to Homecoming, Thanksgiving, or any big game, you will know that we are at capacity. And then this past fall, our team went down to Ducksbury, played on a Friday night. It was such a terrific community event. And Ducksbury A.D. said to me, "It was the best event that he's ever attended," and it was not a playoff game. Why can't we do that in Hingham? Our neighbors in Weymouth have seating capacity of twenty-two hundred, in Rockland, two thousand, at Situate in Silver Lake, eighteen hundred, and in Quincy, six thousand. The ad hoc proposed seating capacity for Articles Eight, Nine, and Ten is fifteen-seventy-eight for the home side, two hundred and thirty-seven for the visiting side. It's been 58 years since we have addressed these fields. 58 years. The concern that a new facility with lights will compromise the educational priority, I want to say to you, I'm proud of the Hingham school system.
You have one minute.
We've always been about educational excellence, and it's because we have teachers and administrators who are my colleagues, who are exceptional educators, and it's because, as a town, we demand an exceptional education, and it's because our student athletes, as I like to call them, they know that academics' performance is their number-one priority. We are a blue-ribbon school. We are a commendation school by the State Department of Education. We just completed our winter season, and more than two-thirds of our student athletes were either high honor roll or honorable.
Your time is up.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Schoyer.
I'm Tim Schoyer, 17 Crest Farm Road. Jock. I wish people would still call me a jock. Um, in, uh, one of the comics, this is off-script, I would never say this, but it's, uh, we're a private family, but two weeks ago, I'm at MIT watching track. So this goes to the job Hingham High School's doing. I'm at MIT watching track. There's two kids that throw the javelin at MIT, who came from Hingham. 2011 Harry Rhine, and 2012 my son Curtis. People are doing something right around here, and that's actually the reason why I, uh, I joined the Ad-Hoc Committee. The Fields Committee was established in July 2011, was empowered by an 87% yes vote on Article 3 at the October 2011 Special Town Meeting. Our charge was to continue the work of the 2006 Field Study Committee by first assisting with the implementation of the track replacement, tennis court repairs, and second, to make recommendation to the school committee regarding design and development of the athletic fields here at Hingham High School. A major focus of our committee was to facilitate community import, uh, excuse me, input and neighborhood dialogue about the nature and scope of Phase 2 of the project, as well as identify major concerns, issues, and develop suggested resolutions for such. School and town officials did an excellent job competing Phase 1 of the project on, on time and on budget. The track and tennis courts are truly a community asset that we now can be proud of. Tonight, we're here to seek approval of Articles 8, 9, and 10, which represent design, permitted, and costed options for the town to consider. Will you go to the, uh... Perfect, thank you. The committee is comprised of eight residents representing a cross-section of interested stakeholders, two high school neighbors, Wallace Boyer and Norman DeGrev, three other residents, Declan Boland, Ann Collins, and Bill Crean, two parents of student athletes, Wayne Eckerson and Mia's chair, and one school committee member, Dr. Ed Schreier as vice chairman. The committee was also joined by ex-officio members, including school superintendent Dr. Dorothy Gallo, John Ferris, town engineer Roger Fernandez, and athletic director Margaret Connady. Next slide, please. This is one of the pictures that helped refocus the town on the issues of the high school fields. The fields drain so slowly that after a large storm, it can result in multi-day rainouts or, uh, which needs to be fixed. The next slide is a slide, side view of our 59-year-old bleachers. They have passed their useful life, and they're not ADA compliant. Safety is a real issue here. Our committee met 25 times over a 15-month period. Each meeting was open to the public, and we entertained comments and questions at every meeting. Our two largest meetings had attendance of over 75 citizens. The first phase of the process entailed reviewing the findings of the 2006 committee and discussing the current conditions of the field. This was by far the easiest part of the process. Today's issues are virtually identical to those identified in 2006. They include poor drainage and general field conditions, lack of comparable playing condition for female athletes, bleachers in disrepair, and non-DA compliant, ADA compliant, and parking issues. Margaret informed the committee that our athletic, our athletic fields ranked ninth out of 10 in our league in terms of condition. The second phase of the meetings entailed hiring and listening to experts in each respective area of the field process. Our design engineer, Gail and Associates, reviewed the entire 26-acre parcel of land at the high school and presented their findings on the property's strengths and limitations. Gail also made multiple presentations regarding unofficial turf fields. We listened, discussed, and received public comments and questions on key points, including turf's reliability and durability, comparable ownership costs versus natural gas, uh, grass, excuse me. For an environmental standpoint, we learned that turf fields and their infield, infill are non-toxic, and are disposable at landfills just like our household trash, and that no fertilizer or chemicals need to be applied. We also discussed health and safety topics, including comments from Dr. McConville, a local orthopedic surgeon. A lighting expert presented twice and discussed why the height of lights is critical both for athletes and neighbors, and also discussed some of their company's more challenging installations. We listened, discussed, and took public comments. Some of the most robust discussions involved the topic of parking. So what did, the parking study concluded that additional parking would not be required for sporting events as long as the town had a plan for handling the biggest events. A large group of neighbors came to many meetings and were persuasive in their view that this is, there is in fact a parking issue at the high school, with, for events like town meeting, concerts, dance recitals, graduations, sports, and other events at the high school. They had very specific requests, which included additional parking spaces in the south lot and more proactive enforcement. Chief of Police Perrino and Deputy Olson also weighed in with suggestions for additional modifications that would improve safety and traffic flow. The committee listened, discussed, and agreed that this was an important issue for the community, and decided to recommend these modifications. The cost of the parking improvements is the largest...
Your time is up.
...variance to the project. Thank you.
Mrs. Falby?
This is what Tim was going to finish saying. I'm Carol Falby, 32 Jones Street. I'm chair of your school committee. Tonight, I'm here to ask the town of Hingham to vote yes on Articles 8, 9, and 10. The articles before you address issues that we have been aware of at the high school since 2005. Hingham is in a unique position today to borrow these funds at a low interest rate and service the debt of out-of-the-town operating budget, which therefore allows us, as Laura explained, to take this project on without raising taxes. At the Special Town Meeting in October of 2011, 87% of the attendees approved the funds to research and develop this design. I would like to publicly thank Tim Schoyer and all the members of the Ad-Hoc Committee for all the time and effort that they put in to what was a very transparent, thoughtful, and public process. The school committee adopted all of their recommendations, and that is what we are voting on here tonight. The timeline behind me clearly illustrates that we have waited until the appropriate time to fund this project. Tim described the recommendations. Um, I will focus on the solutions that Article 8 through 10 offer the town. The scope of this project, uh, grew as the Ad-Hoc Committee proposed, um, went through the planning process. Articles 8 through 10 not only improve the fields, but they also address the drainage issues that we heard so much about, the parking issue, which Tim just explained. Um, it offers improved landscaping and buffering, protects the open space by eliminating a proposed perimeter fence, and funds a state-of-the-art P.A. system, which further mitigates intrusion for the neighborhoods. And we've compromised on what is an extremely used, uh, extremely restrictive usage policy. So let me go through some of the solutions for you here tonight. That's a drainage map. I've learned a lot about pipes. Um, we do have a drainage problem. You've seen Ben's pictures, you saw Tim's pictures. Um, there are four fixes that need to take place to address this drainage issue. First, um, the area where the number one is, where the baseball and field hockey teams play. Uh, we're changing this area. We're re-grading it. Right now, it's concave like a saucer. We're going to, um, reshape it so it's more like a turtleback, and, uh, put a revised drainage infrastructure underneath there. Um, this will be a natural grass field area, which will be reseated and requires a two-year growing period. Where the number two is, this is where we found a failed pipe. It's not working. Um, the circled intersection is where a new pipe will be placed, located correctly, bypassing the old pipe. And then third, a key component to this, uh, solution here is the proposed synthetic turf field. A synthetic turf field is built on crushed stone, on a crushed stone base, which acts as a catch basin. Rainwater will be held here, and then recharged back into the land at a slower rate than a natural grass field. This is a key piece to solving the drainage problem. Fourth, we have a pipe that carries water from the high school side of the, of Union Street, under Union Street. This pipe is also broken. Uh, it, it's going to be replaced with a larger pipe that is plastic. It will allow the water to pass through under Union Street at a higher, um, and faster rate. Three engineers have reviewed this plan, and all, including the engineer relied upon by the planning board, have agreed that this plan will work. We are proud to be able to fix this problem that has plagued the fields in the town for years. It is important to note that all four components need to be implemented. If we do not approve this plan, it is, as is, with the synthetic turf, we will need to re-engineer the drainage, redesign the fields, and re-permit. All those steps, we just completed at a significant dollar cost. Landscaping and buffer. It's time to tear down the old bleachers, built in 1954, and fix the area between the high school and Downing Street. The plan calls for a six-foot fence, which was chosen by the abutters with landscaping. Last summer, we rebuilt the track, moving activity away from the property line. Now it is time to finish this plan. And then parking. As we all know, we have a parking problem and a traffic flow issue here at the high school. We worked closely with Chief Perrino, Gail Associates, and Coler and Colantonio to develop a parking solution. We have added over 103 spots, developed an overflow lot, increased handicap parking at the high school, and we have an approved plan for large events like tonight. The plan also installs drainage infrastructure beneath the lot where none exists today. This will help the overall drainage of the entire property. We are ready and waiting to implement this solution for the town. Now let's talk about costs.
You have one minute.
At the 2011 Special Town Meeting, we had estimated a price tag of $2 to $2.75 million. This did not include the unanticipated and extensive drainage repair at Union Street. It did not improve the increased parking and drainage at the far lot, the best P.A. system, increased landscaping costs. These costs told more than what we are asking for you tonight. In fact, we have received final bids today, and we are in the process of developing the budget. The $4.5 million, uh, dollar you see here is still an estimate. As we promised at Special Town Meeting, we have worked hard to secure additional funding. As we have worked hard, we have applied for an NFL grant, CPC funds, and we have solicited private donors. We have the permits, we have the funds, and we are ready to begin construction this summer. In the meantime, the bleachers are still unsafe and non-ADA compliant. The fields flood and remain flooded for days after the rain stops.
Your time is up.
Please vote yes. Thank you.
Dr. Schreier?
Thank you, Mr., excuse me, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, thank you all for coming.
Identify yourself, sir.
Uh, I'm Ed Schreier, 82 Gardner, and a member of the school committee. I'll spend a few minutes discussing Article 10, Lights, and why we are recommending them. A great deal has been written and discussed about adding lights to the multipurpose field, and much of my discussion will be repetitious, repetitive for many of you. Article 10 proposes to install four 80-foot lights to allow, to allow nighttime athletic The height is engineered to minimize the impact of glare to the athletes and spectators, and to contain spillage to the neighbors. Could we go back to Slide 2? The benefits of such an installation are numerous. Lights will allow people, parents, grandparents, family members, and friends to attend nighttime games who might otherwise not be able to attend due to busy daytime schedules. Early dismissal from class for the student athletes in order to finish games before darkness sets in will be eliminated. The New England tradition of night football is a town-wide experience. Those who attended the 11-11-11 Veterans Day Night Football Game experienced a wonderful evening. And lastly, as our athletic director has pointed out, night games are a revenue producer. May I have Slide 2? Thank you. Now, to put the concept of 80-foot light poles in perspective, Town Hall is 95 feet high. May I have Slide 3? The South Shore Baptist Church is 88 feet high. Hingham High School's student athletes participated in the Patriot League, made up of two divisions. The Kenan Division has Hingham, Ducksbury, North Quincy, Silver Lake, and Whitman Hansen. The Fisher Division is Hanover, Middleborough, Pembroke, Quincy, and Situate. Of the 10 teams mentioned above, only Hingham does not have lights, and Hingham is the only town unable to offer and enjoy night athletic events. May I have Slide 4? Slide 4. Slide 4 demonstrates just how well a properly engineered light installation can accomplish field illumination and a budding blackout. The glow to the left of the goalpost, which we can't, which, which you can't see, is... May I have Slide 5? Slide 5 gives us a visual of how well the technology is able to coordinate the light. This is, this will be our field. When the vendor, Musco Lighting representative Andrew Dizik, was questioned about lowering the height to less than 80 feet, he unequivocally stated that any height reduction of the light posi, of the light position will negatively impact the engineering both on and off the I would also point, draw your attention to the four light poles in the picture, two in the foreground, dark because they are, uh, illight. Uh, and the two in the background. If you look closely at the two lights in the background, uh, you'll see a box, and in fact, the box is a speaker, which is an integral part of a well-designed and engineering sounding, sound amplification system.
You have one minute.
The Ad-Hoc Committee spent a great deal of time wrestling with the issue of sound The light, the, uh, sound boxes, speakers, have to be mounted 40 feet off of grade. We propose to put them on the light poles. Folks, Article, our folks, Article 7 does not go far enough. Let's fix the fields and take advantage of state-of-the-art technology in drainage, synthetic infill... synthetic infield, plain surface, sound amplification, and nighttime illumination. I ask for your support in voting yes for Articles eight, nine, and ten. As we continue, I'd like to take this moment to invite people who are currently standing to take some of the available seats that still exist, mindful that if you do not do so, that at such time as we come to vote, you will not be able to vote. So why don't we just take a moment? There are scattered seats down here, six or eight. I see them elsewhere if people need to make available seating, please do so. I can also advise you that we have three other locations that are currently open. They are the auditorium, the cafeteria, and Room 103. The primary seating availability is in Room 103 when there remain approximately seventy-five seats. But once again, I do see seats in the center here, right off that aisle by the microphone. And now that we have these fancy new seats that you will next see at a wedding reception, avail yourselves of them. You paid for them. As we continue our consideration of the high school fields project, which is encompassed under Articles eight, nine, and ten, is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Yes, sir. One at a time. One speaker. That's okay. Could you guys sit down? It's a safe neighborhood.
Hello. My name is John O'Connell. I'm a current Hingham senior. I was going to be joined by my teammates Ethan Pelissier and Ricky Sullivan. They just wanted to show their support. As student-athletes that will graduate from Hingham High School on June 1st, we are speaking to support the field project. We have all played on that field as young boys in youth sports and bigger men in high school proudly representing our town. However, our favorite community games were usually played in other towns on Friday evenings due to Hingham's lack of an appropriately lit field or rescheduled games at another facility due to an unplayable muddy surface in Hingham. Wherever the venue, we played strong and proud, as that is how we were raised. We now want to continue that Hingham spirit we created by making better athletic conditions for future generations. This senior year, we were able to witness a huge surge in school spirit at away games. While home attendance did increase, it did not touch our night away game audiences. Such new facilities would raise that home spirit and allow Hingham as a community to unite. Our athletic careers at Hingham High are over, but we hope that in future years, we can return proud Hinghamites at beautiful new facilities and cheer proudly Hingham sports. Many of us recently turned eighteen, and we will cast our first votes as adults at this meeting in our high school gymnasium. We look forward to seeing democracy in action and trust that people will be fair in the debate. We will continue to proudly represent Hingham upon graduation and hope to pay our good fortune forward by supporting the field project and helping the next generation secure a better playing environment to foster community amongst everyone in this great town of Hingham. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Warren Pelissier, proud husband, father, and taxpayer at 147 Main Street. I've spoken to you at the last special town meeting about the need to study, understand, and provide a fully-vetted plan to address the deteriorating conditions of our high school fields, our athletic classrooms. We asked at that time for your support, and resoundingly, we got an eighty-seven percent support. Thank you. Thank you for your support. There were, there were three basic components of the promise going forward that were part of that vote. The first was that an ad hoc committee be formed that was representative of abutters, high school parents, neighbors, and concerned citizens. Second was that there would be a proposal that would fully be vetted, return-to-town meetings, so that we could again vote on the facts. Third was that there would be a public-private partnership formed to help reduce the costs of this fully-vetted project for the taxpayers. The ad hoc committee held over twenty-five public meetings and performed their tasks with unbelievable professionalism, in tremendous attention to detail, thus providing the experts in engineering, sound, lighting, safety, a much more definable task, that these experts, coupled with our own experts Roger Fernandez and John Ferris, produce a fully-vetted plan that takes into concern all the needs expressed by the citizens, the athletic director, coaches, school officials, neighbors, abutters, youth sports, the chief. Chief Pereno was deeply involved. Thank you, chief. This plan has been through all committees and boards and has been approved by all. Now away to your vote. Which leads me to the task of fundraising to fulfill the promise of a public-private partnership. We started out with three major premises. First, to ensure that, that those who made financial commitments would know how their donations would be utilized. We promised donors a fully-vetted, public, and transparent process in a commitment to the recommendations that came out of that process. Second, we wanted to separate the infrastructure from the amenities. We feel the town should be paying for the infrastructure. Third was to cast a wide net so we can incorporate everyone's interest in donating to this project, from a large donor to a $25 ticket payer. Everyone that we approached understood the project that they were pledging to, followed the process over the past eighteen months, and appreciated the open, transparent process that we took. And by the way, I'd like to just go back and talk about why we're at this process in the first place. We're talking about a number of athletes here at the high school. What we actually have, not a very small number are going to take advantage of this. We have seventy-two percent of the high school population participate in athletics at Hingham High School. None of, none of us spends money to charities that can't tell us how they plan to spend their donations. People are not willing to donate to a plan that has not been vetted by professionals or taxpayers, does not include the input of our athletic director or any youth president, and severely curtails the use of the, the use of the fields by those, by those students. Fine citizens who deeply care for our town participated in the public process that resulted in the school committee's plan. They respect what the town and the ad hoc committee did to make the process fair, inclusive, and open. They recognize that compromise is a hallmark of our town and appreciate that Articles eight, nine, and ten represent that sense of finding middle ground and that they have endorsed the fair, inclusive, and transparent process in the project with their wallets. We can't at the last minute assume that private donors would similarly endorse a last-minute proposal that did not endure the same rigorous standards of public process and is not endorsed by our advisory committee, the Board of Selectmen, nor the school committee. We have currently raised over $600,000 in pledges towards the lights in support of the infrastructure of the project, the promise of a true public-private partnership going far beyond just the amenities but covering a significant part of the infrastructure. We did cast a very wide net. There was a big green event put on by the supporters of the field project that attracted over 500 people, sold out in less than two weeks, and pledged an additional $50,000 to the project, including the seats that will be marked with donors' names.
You have one minute.
Andy Schafter played a very important role in that. Chris Falvey put in a very important role in that. I will leave you with three points about the public-private partnership. Pledges were raised in a very transparent effort. Everyone knew what they were pledging towards, the school committee's plan. Two, there's a very deep conviction on everyone's behalf that the project be done right with the youth through entire community taken into consideration with a look towards the future. And I've personally been involved with this, so there will be no bait-and-switch tactics with our donors. Now we're back. The ad hoc committee and public service groups have done exactly what the town has asked them to do at special town meeting and have performed magnificently. Six hundred thousand has been pledged to date. A lender of mutual understanding that outlines that was delivered to the school committee this evening regarding this effort. Further, thank you, and please vote for eight, nine, and ten. Thank you.
Mr. Piles for the advisory committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Hi, folks. I'm Tom Piles from 727 Main Street of the advisory committee. For the past twenty-one months, I've been the advisory committee's liaison for the high school fields project. I'm here to speak for the majority of the advisory committee in support of the school committee's proposal for the improvements to the complex. The town has a very valuable asset in its athletic fields. They're currently underutilized and they're broken. They need to be fixed. As with all capital assets, deferral of restorations results in further deterioration and a higher cost of repair. After many years of deferral, we need to fix the fields and we need to do it now. The solution to the issues of the high school fields is difficult, complicated, and can be emotional for many. The process of considering the appropriate resolution has been thorough, open, and inclusive. The project has been fully-vetted by numerous boards and committees. The role of the advisory committee is to deliberate the pros and the cons of all the alternatives and ultimately recommend to the town meeting the most effective action for all of the town. The advisory committee values the various alternatives to any solution to any complex issues. We applaud the petitioners' motivations of offering a different approach. In our opinion, despite a good-faith effort, Article seven has not had the time nor the resources to fully develop a mature proposal. The advisory committee feels that this alternative has not been adequately vetted. In addition, the majority feels that the bleachers are right-sized in the school committee's proposal and that lights are appropriate for the fields. Our endorsement of the school committee's proposal has not been a slam dunk. We struggled with several issues: no grass alternative advanced, neighborhood impacts of lights extending the playing time into the evening, and the large scale and cost of the improvements. Yet the majority feel that the proposed solution put forth by the school committee is the most balanced and efficient resolution to the underlying issues addressed at the school meeting, at the special town meeting on October of 2011. Importantly, the ad hoc committee and the school committee worked diligently and publicly to come up with the best solution. The proposal will fix the basic needs at the fields. The bleachers will be constructed to address code issues, will accommodate the large current and hopefully expanded usage, expanded events at the high school complex. The multipurpose field will provide for expanded usage and resolve Title IX issues. We are convinced that a synthetic turf surface is most efficient and should be considered a basic and funded by the town. A drainage system will be constructed to the satisfaction of the town consultant and will meet industry standards. In addressing both the neighborhood and the police department's concern, additional parking spaces and signage will be installed. Importantly, a traffic and parking management policy has been developed to address the concerns of the larger events hosted at the high school. We deem the lights installation appropriate to meet the competitive needs of our student-athletes and also the community's interests. The uses policy put forth has evolved with both the student-athletes and the neighbors in mind. While the cost is, is, cost of the fix is indeed significant, the advisory committee is impressed with the school committee's efforts to limit the financial impact of the project on the town. Sufficient fundraising, as we've just heard, has been and will be conducted. The result will be a true public and private partnership. Importantly, the method of financing will not raise your taxes. In the end, the majority of the advisory committee deems the proposal of the school committee appropriate. It is the right thing to do for both our athletes and the community. While no one wins everything that they hope for, it is a balanced solution. We may not all agree on the size of the bleachers nor the installation of the lights, but we all agree that the fields need to be fixed and they need to be fixed now. Whichever alternative is approved, the town will have an asset that we ought to be proud of, one that we should all stand behind. After all, we are Hingham One. Thank you.
Mrs. Marwell for the advisory committee.
Laura Marwell, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Laura Marwell, 30 Summit Drive, for the advisory committee minority. A minority of the advisory committee is dissatisfied with, a minority of the advisory committee is dissatisfied with the school committee's articles. While there are many different ways to look at this field's issue, as advisory committee members, we are most strongly dissatisfied with the process which took place, the cost of the project, and the impact of this cost on our operating budget for the town. We found the process of developing the high school fields project disturbing. While special town meeting 2011 supported a high school field rehabilitation project, it was not clearly defined whether this was a school or a community project. In the absence of a master plan for all our fields townwide, this project became too much, too much money for many people, too much activity for one neighborhood to absorb, and too many expectations of what this one field with bleachers could become for all sports in this town. Some of us have questioned whether the Hingham Sports Partnership has exerted undue influence over the project. If the project was to be for the community, we should have first put together a master plan to lay out our needs and desires for the community as a whole. Perhaps a better location for a community-wide stadium would be away from the neighborhoods of our town. After all, our neighborhoods are the heart and soul of our community life. When the review process before townwide board started, we sometimes heard different answers to the same questions. The number of people expected to attend games seemed to vary. Drainage was a tricky point. There was an acceptable drainage plan chosen, but some of us feel solving the drainage problem took a backseat to some of the optional features. The usage policy was another sticky point. The neighbors felt vilified for complaining that they would have to go from the current peace and quiet of their neighborhood during most nights to over 150 nights per year of lights and activity during their evening routines and children's bedtime. There appears to have been limited cooperation by the school committee with the proponents of the citizens' petition. When the authors of the citizens' petition tried to use publicly available information from Gale Engineering, they received what amounted to a cease-and-desist letter from the firm, delivered by the school committee's lawyers. In fact, the school committee hired its own legal counsel at taxpayer expense rather than rely on town counsel. And the school committee raised some significant funds for the project, but only for their project, they tell us, not to be used for the citizens' petition project. This seems surprising from a committee elected to serve the town and its wishes as expressed at town meeting. There have been numerous meetings and hours spent on this project, but that does not necessarily mean that it has had the substance of a healthy process. Some of us are concerned that the process has not served the public to the fullest extent. As a result, the high school fields project proposed by the school committee does not meet the expectations set at town meeting 2011. Voters overwhelmingly approved the idea of rehabilitating the high school fields, but the general understanding was the town meeting would be presented with a base recommendation for an estimated cost between $2 and $2.75 million. Additional amenities, including synthetic turf and lights, were to be considered as optional items. Instead, Article eight proposes a project that is broader in scope and higher in price than originally contemplated, and there is no-- than originally contemplated, and there is no natural grass option. The choice for artificial turf has been made for you. Also, the high school fields project appears to be much more expensive than anticipated. Despite efforts at cost savings, the total cost of the project appears to be nearly double the amount originally anticipated. Unfortunately, only estimates have been available. Hingham citizens already will be facing tax increases to pay for the middle school next year, and while the proponents are not requesting an override to pay for the fields project, it represents a significant expense to the town. The funds necessary to finance the annual cost of this project will not be available for other needs like road repairs, capital purchases, or restoration of educational services. Do we really want to devote so many of our tax dollars to pay for an impressive new athletic facility when there are other demonstrated needs still to be met? The advisory committee minority is opposed also because the sports complex proposed by the school committee will change the historic and traditional character of the location. Granite curbing and increased signage will be installed along Union Street, the town's first designated scenic way. Permanent seating for 2,000 and a large concession stand will be constructed, and the area will no longer have the open space appeal that it currently has.
You have one minute.
We also feel that the proposed use is too intense for an already overburdened site. Parking and safety have been concerns at the high school fields for years. One is reminded of the saying, "If you build it, they will come." There will be more traffic, more noise, more light, and more general activity, especially at night. Again, is this a high school project or a community sports project? All parties cannot be served adequately at this particular site. As written in Boston Magazine, of the fifty best high schools inside I-495, Hingham is thirty-one. Only two schools have more sports programs. Perhaps the sports tail is wagging the academic dog. If Article VII fails, please vote no on Articles Eight, Nine, and Ten, and let's work together to develop a more balanced proposal for the whole town. Thank you.
Thank you very much. My name's John McNichols, and I live at 20 Middle Street. Can you hear me?
Speak right into that microphone, John, please.
All righty. John McNichols, 20 Middle Street. Is that good?
Great.
I, I live right down the street. I didn't, I didn't measure it. Somebody used the metric of an eighth of a mile. My daughter did tell me this morning that it takes her less than five minutes to walk to the high school, so it's pretty close. And we moved there expressly kind of to be in the middle of things. Our first house was down in Cushing Pond, near the Cushing Pond area. And when you're in the middle of things, traffic goes with that, activity goes with that. Likewise, in reference to an earlier speaker, somebody mentioned that the neighborhoods are the heart and soul of a community. Well, I think an equally strong case can be made that the schools are the heart and soul of your community. And athletics and academics go hand in hand. I can't comment on the survey. My daughter is having a great experience at Hingham High School. I will say I have been to the athletic facilities at a lot of those schools that are ranked higher than us, and you know what? They're better, too. So maybe we're behind in both areas, and we need to keep going. If you doubt the relationship between athletics and academics in schools or colleges, you don't have to go to too many top-flight colleges, Ivy League schools, NSCA schools, top private schools around the country, to get a sense for how they go hand in hand. And in a high school, in a town, a lot of that comes down to community spirit and how people feel about the high school has to do with more than just the survey. It has to do with how they connect with their neighbors and their friends when they go to school events. And here, to reference back to another comment, that Duxbury High night football game, I attended that back in the fall because my kids asked to go. It's the only game they asked to go to all year. In fact, it's the only game they've ever asked to go to. And it was an enormous community event. Somebody made a comment that the Duxbury Athletic Director talked about that. It was an enormous athletic event or community event for Hingham. There were more Hingham people at that event than in any other event since the Thanksgiving, or the night game two years ago that I've, that I've been to, not counting things like the Fourth of July parade. So, you know, and I was sitting on the Duxbury side because I got there late, and the Hingham fans had swamped the meager stand, the Hingham fans had swamped the meager stands on the visitor's side and had swamped the bank. Those of you who were there, you know, nod because this is exactly what happened. So I was sitting in the bleachers on the Duxbury side, and it was a multi-generational family-community event. I mean, there were seventy-year-olds talking to fifty-year-olds, talking to thirty-year-olds, reflecting back on the old days, talking about the new kids, talking about the freshmen and the varsity. I mean, it was an enormous thing. You kind of had to be there to experience it. And, you know, look, Hingham is not Texas, it's not Florida, it's not a place where all these things are going to happen. They're not going to draw 5,000 people to a game. But that experience is something that is critical for a high school to succeed and thrive. And I think we should spend the money now on the fields, on the more expansive project for the fields, and I favor that, despite the fact that I live a third of a mile away or roughly. And I think down the road, we need to do what we need to do to get the rankings up and get, you know, from thirty-two to wherever it is we should be. But it's not a choice tonight, and so I think we should vote yes on the more expansive project, eight, nine, and ten.
Dr. Gallo for the school committee.
Dorothy Gallo, one volunteer row and actually superintendent of schools, not a member of the school committee. There've been a lot of comments tonight about costs and what we spend on education and what we get for our dollar, and even some comments about what we don't get for our dollars. Certainly, it's no easy matter for this town to address both the annual operating costs and the capital needs of all of the town departments. But fortunately, and because many of you are in this room, we have sound practices, we have creative thinking, we have competent people who are in place, many of you are in that number. But it's still hard balancing annual revenues with the need for funding for other important projects. That's always a challenge. We are comfortable, the school department and the school committee, that our town can afford its share, I emphasize share, of this project without compromising either the school's operating budget or the needs of other departments. There are times, and this is one of them, when borrowing is a good strategy, and that comes from a very conservative soul standing here. When interest rates are low, borrowing for one-time projects allows the town to spread capital costs out over a longer period of time with a predictable annual income, excuse me, predictable annual impact on the interest line of the operating budget. That's particularly helpful on the school side, as some of our costs, such as for special education, are very unpredictable and can vary dramatically from year to year. As well, selective borrowing at certain times can take some larger projects off the plate of our capital outlay committee, allowing it to spread its annual resources to meet the demands of all of the town departments. And most certainly, borrowing mitigates long and costly delays in getting necessary projects off the ground. I doubt that there is anyone in this room who would not agree that municipal projects increase significantly in cost over time. Codes and regulations change, construction costs increase with inflation, and the many aspects of both local permitting processes and state bidding and procurement laws add costs that grow projects as well. The school department operating budget must meet varied needs of students at all levels, academic needs and social needs and athletic needs and all kinds of other needs. Such academic, programmatic, and support needs require appropriate levels of teaching and support staffing and instructional and equipment resources. And we've struggled recently, as many of you have, with your own resources and your families, to do some catching up and to keep pace with the increasing enrollments, growing numbers of mandates, social and emotional needs of kids and families, and also with the demands of the technologically dense society into which our children will graduate. Work on those goals will not be diminished because of this project, nor will the school committee's advocacy, and neither, in my long experience here, will this town's commitment to providing ongoing educational excellence and expertise for our youngest resident. It's come to my attention recently that there are some parents who are concerned that funding for this project may compromise our ability or even our willingness to fund costs for special education. Certainly, nothing could be further from the truth. Team decisions about students' individualized education plans dictate our budget allocations in those areas. That's the law, and that's the appropriate way for decisions to be made about children's special needs. I'm saddened that anyone would suggest to those parents otherwise. Special education budget is now more than a quarter of our annual operating budget. It is uneven and unpredictable at times, but those of us who are educators in this state, and I dare say in this country, all should continue to believe that the state and federal government need to step up to the plate to assist the local cities and towns in meeting those costs. This high school fields project is important to accomplish, but it will not diminish our responsibility, and indeed, our responsibility to our needed students. We've addressed other high-priority school needs already, such as resolving elementary and middle school facilities and enrollment issues. We've delayed, and appropriately so, the necessary work on high school fields because of those other priorities. We've begun that renewal process with the renovated track and with the tennis courts, and now we must finish the job. That athletic infrastructure is well past its fifty-eight-year life, and the time is now. And before I close, because that was going to be the end of what I was going to say, I want to make a couple of other comments.
You have one minute.
We have a survey that's been mentioned many times this year. There are different ways to look at numbers. I'm a mathematician. One way is to say, well, thirty out of fifty isn't so very good. Another way to say, thirty out of three hundred high schools in the state is pretty damn good. I am proud of what we do here. I am proud of those young men that came here to speak tonight. I am proud of all that we do. Can we do better? Yes. Should we do better? Absolutely. But you should know, one of the factors in that survey that worked against us was per pupil cost. When you're nineteenth out of twentieth, you don't get the points of all of the thirty that were above you for per pupil cost. So I stand here proud of what we do, knowing we can do better, we will do better, and we should do better, but now finish the project.
Is there further debate? Yes, ma'am, in the, in the aisle. I've recognized her.
Moderator?
I've recog, I'll be with you in a minute, Mr. McElany. I've recognized a voter in the gymnasium.
Jill Mullin, 22 Downing Street. Noise and participation in night games is disruptive to children and our students' education. Downing Street is a quiet neighborhood at night, allowing for our young children to get off to sleep peacefully, and it allows the older children to attend to their homework. Distractions from lights and noise will limit our school-aged children's ability to learn, listen, concentrate, and solve problems. Night games will change the quality of life on Downing Street. Games at night are not advantageous to any child's success in the classroom. The current plan does not call for the use of lights every night, but I fear the usage policy will be challenged, excuse me, will be challenged going forward, allowing for more. We are continually having a national conversation about education and the importance of homework. Learning does not end at three o'clock. Like it or not, important and valuable lessons need to be extended at home. Lights encourage all our children's days to be extended on beyond what makes sense for their well-being, their learning, and their academic success. There needs to be a balanced approach to academics and athletics. We all know the high school fields are in lamentable shape and need to be fixed. The current plans can be scaled back considerably. Education is primarily about students' academic well-being. Academic success leads to more career opportunities. A professional sports career is not an option for any but the most elite student-athletes. As the world evolves, so do job trends and job descriptions. It's important to structure our students' schooling in a way that will prepare them for a career of the future. The growing fields that our children will find careers in are medicine, technology, financial services, education, and engineering. These are undeniably the career paths of the majority of our students, not football or field hockey. We can't lose sight of school's first responsibility, educating our children. Hingham students need to get back into the game academically and athletically. Education is our passport to the future. Tomorrow belongs to the people who prepare for it today. If we educate today as we educated yesterday, we rob our children of tomorrow. There must be a balanced approach to education and athletics. Please ask yourself this question: In what arena will my child's career most likely be? Sports or something else? Thank you.
Recognize the voter in the auditorium.
Ellen Wayland, 681 Main Street. I just had a procedural question. Can someone explain which one of these articles need a two-thirds vote and which need fifty and what the difference is? Why, why, what would need one or the other?
Yes, happily. Article VII, Article VIII, and Article IX all require for adoption a two-thirds majority. There are relevant laws in the Commonwealth that speak to the quantum of vote that is required. Each of VII, VIII, and IX calls for borrowing, and under the applicable Massachusetts law, any motion that would authorize the town to engage in borrowing requires a two-thirds majority. Article X does not ask for an expenditure of any amount and does not imply or call for borrowing. So the passage of Article X, when we come to Article X, will require for adoption a simple majority, fifty plus one. Does that answer your question, ma'am?
Yes, but it leads to another one. It seems like the lights are the most contentious issue here tonight. If that's the only one that passes, what happens?
We'll cross that bridge when we come to it. Is there further debate under Article VII? Yes, sir, in the rear. For those of you who may not be familiar, I've just been invited to accept the motion for the previous question. As is set forth at the bottom of the moderator's message on town procedures at page three of your warrant booklet, that explains what the motion for the previous question is. It states specifically, "The motion for the previous question is intended to end debate and to have immediate vote on the pending question." The motion for the previous question is not debatable, and it requires, under our practice, a majority vote for adoption. I think we have had a full and fair consideration of the fields project as proposed under Articles VII and VIII, IX, and X. As I said at the outset, we will vote only on VII. I will accept the motion for the previous question, but now we need to have a vote on it. If you wish to end debate on this matter and proceed to vote on Article VII, you will vote yes on the motion for the previous question. If you would like to hear more debate under Article VII, VIII, IX, and X before proceeding to vote on Article VII, you will vote no on the previous question. So all those in favor, and let me say also, having presided as an assistant in the cafeteria or the auditorium or Room 103, those assemblies can get, I think, passive because they watch this on television. I encourage you to, as I said in a respectful but audible voice, make your voices heard to Mr. Bolterra in Room 103, to Mrs. O'Mara in the cafeteria, and to Mr. McElany in the, in the auditorium. Of course, we vote now by voice vote, so the matter before you right now is the motion for the previous question. If you wish to end debate and vote on VII, you will vote yes. If you wish to hear further debate, you will vote no. All those in favor of the motion for the previous question, please say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed, please say no. It is a clear supermajority in the gymnasium. Let me proceed before we... Mr. McElany, what is the vote in the auditorium?
It was a unanimous vote in the auditorium.
In favor?
In favor of the motion.
Mrs. O'Mara in the cafeteria?
It was a fan.
It was a fan.
Mr. Bolterra in room one oh three?
Unanimous is favor.
All right, so the motion for the previous question is passed. We now come to vote on item seven. We have had a sufficient passage of time. Allow me to refresh our mutual recollection. We now come to vote on the motion under article seven. I say by way of description, since there was confusion in the days preceding the meeting, if you wish the smaller project that may include turf, but only if it is privately funded, if you wish to prohibit the installation of field lighting, no matter how those lights might be funded, you will vote in favor of the motion that has been made under article seven. If your preference is for the larger project that is proposed under eight, and you wish to consider the town's funding, the installation of the article, the artificial turf, or other amenities as is proposed under nine, and if you wish to consider further the question of whether the town will allow the erection and installation of the eighty-foot light poles as is proposed under article ten, you will vote against the motion pending under article seven. Now, as I said, sufficient time having passed, let me just refresh our recollection and read again article seven, the affirmative motion. Recommended that the town appropriate a sum not to exceed two million, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars to be expended under the direction of the school committee to fund phase two of the high school fields improvement project located at zero seventeen Union Street. The project. The project may include purchase and installation of an artificially surfaced field or other amenities only if funded by private sources. The project will limit permanent bleacher seating to accommodate no more than one thousand spectators and expressly excludes erection of any light poles. To meet said appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the board of selectmen is authorized to borrow said sum under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-four, or any other enabling authority upon such terms as the town treasurer and board of selectmen shall determine. That motion was made and seconded. It requires for its adoption a two-thirds majority because it involves borrowing. All those in favor of the passage of article seven, please say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed, please say nay.
Nay!
It is clear to me that the nays have it, and the motion is lost. Mr. McElhenney?
The nays have it in the auditorium as well, Mr. Moderator.
Mrs. O'Mara?
The nays have it.
Mr. Bolterra?
The nays have it, Mr. Moderator.
The motion is lost. We come to article eight. Article eight is the project as proposed by the school committee. If you turn to page twenty-seven, you will see the recommended motion of the advisory committee. Again, we have had ample debate under seven as we considered eight, nine, and ten. I will abstract at page twenty-seven, the recommended motion of the advisory committee. It is that the town appropriate a sum not to exceed three million, seven hundred sixty-five thousand, one hundred eighty dollars to be expended under the direction of the school committee to fund phase two of the high school fields improvement project located at zero seventeen Union Street, all as is more particularly set forth in the recommended motion of the advisory committee. The project continue at page twenty-eight toward the bottom. Such project shall include, under M, the installation but not payment for field turf or a similar artificial service, surface rather, on the multipurpose field. To meet said appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the board of selectmen is authorized to borrow said sum under MGL, Chapter forty-four, or other enabling authority upon such terms as the town treasurer and the board of selectmen shall determine. That is the recommended, the recommended motion of the advisory committee. Is there further debate on this, addressing issues that we have not yet heard in our extended conversation on this project? Yes, sir?
Al Engelhardt, ninety-six Martin's Lane. My only request is on eight. If it, I'm not too sure if eight will make the two-thirds. It's very hard to tell what two-thirds is by voice. And I think a count, do people know that they can stand immediately and demand a count? Is that true, Mr. Moderator?
No, it is not, sir. Under our bylaw, all votes are taken the first instance by voice vote.
I understand that. But once it is taken, and if a judgment is made, yea or nay, can people still stand and express the need for a stand-up vote?
If seven voters rise because they doubt the call, we will then proceed to a standing vote.
Okay, thank you.
There being no further debate, we now come to vote on the recommended motion of the advisory committee under article eight. That recommended motion requires for its passage a two-thirds majority. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed, no. Mr. McElhenney, I judge that in the gymnasium, the ayes have it. Please...
In the auditorium, the ayes have it by more than two-thirds.
Mrs. O'Mara?
The ayes have it.
Mr. Bolterra?
The ayes have it, Mr. Moderator.
I declare that the motion has been passed by more than a two-thirds majority. More than seven voters have risen in the auditorium, so we will now proceed to have a standing vote. Let me explain briefly the procedure for a standing vote. The standing vote will be overseen by the tellers. In order to participate in the standing vote, this is somewhat counterintuitive, you must first have a seat. Otherwise, we'll count you twice. So if you do not currently have a seat, as I said, as in church, there are several seats right down here in the front row. Needless to say, our welcome guests may not vote. We will begin the voting on the standing vote from the front of the hall toward the back. This allows the tellers more efficiently to see you, and what I'll ask you to do is first, we're going to ask the people who were, had voted yes or aye. Yes, sir. Come forward, please, and address to a microphone.
Yes, Mark Rockoff, thirty-six Pleasant Street. I just would like to ask if we would like to, if we would like to have a ballot vote instead of a standing vote, so that, so that people can vote...
Please let Dr. Rockoff speak, please.
So that people could vote without fear of intimidation. There's been a lot of concern that students or athletes or their parents are concerned that their children will be adversely affected if they vote against this. So what would it take for there to be a ballot vote instead of a standing vote, Mr. Moderator?
Our tradition, of course, in this town has been to avoid ballot votes because of the time that they take, and to proceed with a standing vote. That having been said, under our bylaws, if fifty voters were to rise and call for a standing vote, then we will, I strike that, a ballot vote, we will then bypass the standing vote and have a ballot vote. I need the tellers to count. Do you have standing voters who are calling for a ballot vote in the auditorium? Andy?
We do, Mr. Moderator. We have...
I'm asking the tellers, please, to count the number of voters who have risen in the
We have six citizens standing in the auditorium.
Mrs. O'Mara in the cafeteria, please.
One minute. How many? We have six.
Mr. Bolterra?
There's one voter, Mr. Moderator.
So there are thirteen in the areas other than the gymnasium. If you could report your numbers here to Mrs. McCracken or Mrs. Foley, please, then More than fifty voters have called for a ballot vote. We will now proceed to a ballot vote. Yes, we have a question, sir. Come forward to a microphone, please. Identify yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Michael Seatau, thirty-four Rockwood Road. Since we're going to a ballot vote, what is the option of doing a ballot vote for eight, nine, and ten, all on a single ballot, so that we don't allow this filibuster to continue?
While your suggestion obviously met with popular acclaim, it is impermissible. We will now proceed to have a ballot vote on number eight. Let me explain the procedure for a ballot vote. The gymnasium is divided into five sections, the auditorium into three, the cafeteria into two. As I mentioned at the outset, the tellers play an essential role here. There will be tellers assigned to each section. As you can see, we have wooden ballot boxes in the front of each section. Voters seated in a particular section will be given a ballot and will ultimately, our ballots are quite simple, if you've not worked with them before, it's a physical piece of paper with yes on one side and no on the other. Here, we work from back to front. So we will now have a ballot vote ordered. I asked the moderator, the moderator asked the tellers to come to the front of the gymnasium. There is a regular teller in each section, and that regular teller is given a supply of ballots by the town clerk or a person acting under her authority. The tellers will then go to the sections to which they have been assigned. They will begin with the last row of seats in that section. The teller who will have with him or her the ballots will direct each voter up the aisle to the ballot box, handing one ballot to each voter. Of course, that excludes guests who are not eligible to vote. Once your ballot is in hand, you will proceed to the front of the room. The special teller will direct the voter to leave the ballot box, leaving the ballot box to drop the unused portion of his or her ballot into the waste barrel, and then to return to the seats as you are directed. The procedure will continue, again, beginning with the back of the room, moving toward the front. Members of the advisory committee and the selectmen and other voters sitting in the front of the gym use ballot box in section one. Checkers and those of you who are outside the hall will use the ballot box in section five. There are similar procedures to be followed in each of the gymnasium, the cafeteria, and room one oh three. So I would ask now that the ballots be distributed, and we will begin the process of ballot voting in each of the four venues, again, beginning in the back of that particular
Above voters in the auditorium who are from the middle section, section seven, please cast your ballots in the box in the middle of section seven.
Yeah, me too. Well, I don't think that...
Gracias.
Hi Bill, how are you? Good to see you.
How are you?
Fine, fine.
The ironic thing about all of them...
And so, I don't know, that's gonna be a sign of order for Jake and me, but...
Yeah, yeah.
This is always gonna be Jake's like shadow.
Are you gonna head out? Are you setting your head down?
I'm just gonna show everybody who's healthy. No one's on the floor.
No?
That's some expensive experiences now being...
Oh, someone's way, I'm sorry.
You'd all please take your seats. We have counted the ballots cast in the gymnasium, in the auditorium, in the cafeteria, and in room 103. The total yes votes, one thousand three hundred fifty-four. The total no votes, three hundred forty-seven. Substantially more than two-thirds voted in the affirmative on eight, the vote carries. We now come to Article Nine. Could please come up here.
Uh, Linda Hill, 260 Main Street, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider, um, Article Eight.
Is there a second? A motion has just been made and seconded, uh, to reconsider the vote just taken under Article Eight. For its passage, it requires a two-thirds vote. Once this vote has been reconsidered, it cannot be reconsidered a second time. All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration, please say aye. All those opposed, no. The noes clearly have it. The motion for reconsideration is lost. We come now to Article Nine. Article Nine asks, "Will the town raise an appropriate borrower transfer from available funds, a sum of money to be expended under the direction of the school committee to fund the installation of a field turf or similar artificial surface as part of the construction of a new multipurpose playing field, MPF, in connection with Phase Two of the High School Fields Improvement Project, or any act relating thereto?" The recommended motion of the advisory committee is an affirmative motion. It is set forth at page twenty-eight. And it reads that the town appropriated a sum not to exceed four hundred fifty-four thousand twenty dollars to be expended under the direction of the school committee to fund the installation of field turf at the MPF. To meet said appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow, under the relevant provisions of Massachusetts General Laws. As I said before, this requires, on account of borrowing, a two-thirds majority vote. Is there discussion? Mr. Friedman?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dennis Friedman, 445 Cushing Street, for the school committee. As you've heard several times earlier this evening, installing a synthetic turf multipurpose field is an integral part of the solution to resolving our problems at the high school fields. It contributes significantly to improving drainage throughout the complex while allowing us to rest natural turf fields when they are most vulnerable. More intensive use of the multipurpose field will also help to address shortage of fields within the town, while enabling use by multiple sports in the same season without detrimental impacts on the playing surface, thereby equalizing conditions for boys and girls teams as required by Title Nine. In addition, synthetic turf provides a safer, more uniform playing surface for our students and community athletes. The really good news is that we can enjoy all these benefits without spending more money over the life of the multipurpose field. This fact has been verified by our engineering firm's calculation of lifecycle ownership costs for the town, which take into consideration upkeep and replacement costs over a thirty-year period. However, it is also true that the synthetic turf field has a higher initial capital cost, which is then offset by lower operating costs over the life of the field. Approving this article is the only way to ensure that we have enough money on hand to build a synthetic turf multipurpose field this summer as part of the project you have just approved. The funding for the synthetic turf field was separated from the previous article in recognition of the perception by some that it was an amenity, which I think you all understand is not really the case. Therefore, it was felt this approach would make the decision more straightforward. Please vote to approve town funding of a synthetic turf multipurpose field. Thank you.
There are further debates under Article Nine. If there is none, we come to vote. Article Nine, the motion rather, under Article Nine, requires for passage a two-thirds majority. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it. More than two-thirds, the motion carries. Article Ten. Yes?
Apologize for having to do this, but Linda Hill, 260 Main Street, may I make a motion to reconsider, please, Article Nine?
Motion has been made and seconded to reconsider the action just taken under Article Nine. All those in favor of reconsidering the action, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. The noes have it. Reconsideration is lost. Article Ten. Article Ten asks, "Will the town allow the erection and installation of four eighty-foot-high light poles at designated locations identified on the design plans for the multipurpose playing field intended to be constructed at the high school in connection with the High School Fields Improvement Project?" The recommended motion of the advisory committee is set forth in your books at page twenty-nine. It is a, an affirmative motion to allow the erection and installation of the aforementioned light poles. Is there discussion? Hearing none, we would come to vote. This requires for its adoption a majority, not a two-thirds, a simple majority. All those in favor of the recommended motion of the advisory committee, please say aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes clearly have it. Mr. McElany, in the auditorium? Can you repeat that, Mr. McElany?
The ayes have it in the auditorium as well.
Mrs. Amer, if there are voters still in the cafeteria, please?
The ayes have it.
Mr. Baltar, for room 103?
The ayes have it in 103, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, that is a, the vote carries. We now...
Linda Hill, 260 Main Street, make a motion to reconsider Article Ten?
Motion to reconsider Article Ten. The action taken under Article Ten has been made and seconded. All those in favor of reconsidering the action taken under Article Ten, please say aye. All those opposed, no. The noes have it. The motion for reconsideration is lost. We now come to Article Eleven. Article Eleven is one of two articles that speaks to... Recommendations of the Community Preservation Committee. This is a matter of extreme importance to the community and involves the expenditure of very substantial funds. I would encourage voters to participate in the balance of the matters before the meeting. Article Eleven is a slightly different format than we have followed in years past for community preservation recommendations. I will explain it a bit, but essentially, we are going to follow in a slightly modified way for Article Eleven, the procedure that we have traditionally followed for Article Six. Before we begin Article Eleven, which is one of two and only two articles concerning recommendations of the Community Preservation Committee, I would invite the chairman of that committee, Dan Coughlin, to come forward to give us a brief overview of the matters that his committee has studied and which it is recommending by way of expenditures of appropriate sums of money for community preservation purposes. Mr. Coughlin?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Tonight, we come before you to discuss the CPC deliberations from the past year. We've prepared a slight, a simple overview of the past projects, the current projects, and the future projects that the CPC has been considering.
Can hear it?
Okay, alright. Boy, you really do have to eat this thing, don't you? Wow, okay, alright. If I could have the, the second slide. The CPC program through, uh, 2012 has been in existence for ten years. As you can see from the two charts, the two pie charts, uh, behind me, we've actually received about eleven million dollars in, in capital for the program. Six point six million dollars of that has come from the tax surcharge that we have all paid as part of our property tax bills. An additional four point four million dollars has come from the state coffers. And that money would not have been available to us had we not contributed through our own tax surcharges. So, we've actually got a dollar seventy for every dollar that we've taken out of our tax bills. So, it's a, a good source of revenue. And it's a source of revenue that allows us to invest in projects that we otherwise wouldn't be able to invest in for the town. What you see on the right-hand side of the allocations, we've invested a little over eleven million dollars again. And in the green area shows seventy percent of that capital has been used to fund open space acquisitions. Again, properties that the town now owns, largely through conservation restrictions, that we never would have had the chance to buy if we relied on the annual operating budget of the town. In addition, we've spent about twenty percent of that money on historic preservation. And you'll be hearing more tonight about another very exciting and very important historic preservation project for us, the Heritage Museum. We've also spent about ten percent of the money on affordable housing. And this is an area where we've not had an opportunity to spend as much money as we'd like to. You know, affordable housing projects are limited by definition of the Commonwealth to those projects which are creating new housing, as opposed to managing existing housing. This has become an issue for us, and we have, because of the, the law, reserved now three hundred thousand dollars, which we've not expended, uh, and have available for housing projects that would be affordable in nature and would again create new housing projects in town. If I go to the next slide. This year, we presented, we had presented to us over five million dollars in requests for new projects. We had about a million dollars in revenue to spend. So, we had our work cut out for us in terms of allocating these very worthy projects and trying to slim the number down to an appropriate amount. In addition to that, we had several other issues that we addressed for the first time. One is, we had to replenish our reserves. Last year, we overspent the money we had purposely so that we could acquire forty acres of conservation land. We knew we were doing that, and we reached forward into the 2013 allocation by three hundred thousand dollars. First thing we had to do was to replenish that, so we had the books back in balance. Second thing that happened to us was the Commonwealth changed the law. And they said, "You can now invest in recreational projects." Well, as the Commonwealth seems to do frequently, they expanded the charge, but didn't give us any money. So, now we have more projects being applied for from the same limited amount of capital. We also found that it was important to balance programs. Many people in this room indicated that they did not want to see a lot of money go into recreation projects at the expense of affordable housing or open space, uh, projects that we previously invested in, or historic preservation. So, we tried to balance the projects to make sure that we had an even, uh, representation there. Fourth, affordable housing. Again, as I mentioned before, we're limited by statute in the way that we can spend this money. We would love to spend some money at Thaxter Park. We know there are needs at Thaxter Park, but the problem is, those are of nature of repairs, and we're not allowed under the statute to make those expenditures. In addition, the project is owned by the Commonwealth. So, literally, it's not necessarily our financial obligation. It is, however, our moral obligation to do something there. And we're working with the, uh, housing authorities to try and make amendments to the law or look for other avenues that allow us to invest with the housing authority to make sure that we take care of our neighbors and fellow citizens at Thaxter Park. The last item that we considered, again, very unique, was the whole bonding request. We have a bonding request, and it's a separate article that we'll be discussing next with regard to the Heritage Museum. We think it's a very worthwhile project, a very unique project. But we also take very, uh, seriously our fiscal responsibility not to go out and borrow money, not to spend money capriciously. And so, we spent a great deal of time exploring this opportunity and making sure that it met the criteria that we had for those projects, which were the most unique... met the criteria that we had for those projects, which were the most unique and the rarest and unique opportunity to spend money on a project that was core to the CPC's mission and core to the fabric of this town. And we think that, and as you'll hear later, we think that the Heritage Museum rises to that level of, of gravity. In terms of the specific projects in the next slide, you see that we had ten, actually eleven, projects including an administrative allocation.
You have one minute.
And they broke down into the three categories that you could see before you. Again, about seven hundred and seventeen thousand dollars will be allocated to the projects that are included in Item Eleven, exclusive of the Heritage Museum, and they break down rather evenly among the projects with the exception of housing. And we have an obligation to reserve funds for housing. We have four hundred thousand dollars as of July first for housing projects. It will leave us with a balance for the year, next year, of approximately one point three million dollars in our coffers. Four hundred thousand dollars would be allocated for housing. We have a hundred thousand dollars that we would use for the debt service on the Heritage Museum, if you approve it, and another eight hundred thousand dollars for new projects next year. So, we feel we are left with a good balance of projects and a good balance of capital for next year, even if we reach forward on the Heritage Museum and bond it.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Allow me to read the recommended motion. As I said, we will follow the pattern that we have long followed for Article Six. If you wish to have a particular CPC recommended project held, you can call out hold, I will mark it down. We will then vote on each matter, each project as to which a recommendation has been made that has not been held, and then will return to any matters that you have held. So, looking at the recommended motion of the advisory committee, which is set forth on page thirty-three, that the town appropriate the following sums of money for community preservation purposes from the delineated CPA funds as follows. Forty-five hundred dollars for certain building preservation activities, specifically earthwork and grading at Thaxter Park. One hundred thousand dollars from the preservation historic reserves, and one hundred eighty thousand dollars from the general reserve to be used by the Hingham Cemetery Corporation for historic preservation and restoration of the Ames Chapel. Forty-five thousand dollars from the general reserve fund to be used to preserve the exterior of the Grand Army Hall of the Republic at three fifty-eight Main Street. Eighty-two hundred dollars from the community preservation reserve to be used for the Recreation Commission for, used, rather, by the Recreation Commission for a feasibility study on the preservation of the East Street Skate House. Two hundred forty thousand dollars from the general reserve to be used by the Hingham Conservation Commission to purchase the land at interests totaling five point six-two acres at one twenty-seven Rockland Street, including Sidney's Pond. Ten thousand dollars from the community preservation general reserve for deposit to the town's conservation fund for purchase of land, capital improvements, and expenses related to acquisitions to make deposits or down payments toward acquisitions or creations of such interest in open space or to otherwise preserve o, open space. Fifty thousand dollars from the general reserve to be used by the Recreation Commission for the renovation and rehabilitation of the Bradley Woods Playground and Park. Fifteen thousand dollars from the general reserve to be used by the Recreation Commission for the renovation and rehabilitation of the Cronin Field Basketball Court, an outdoor hockey rink. Fifty thousand dollars from the general reserve to be used by the Hingham School Committee for the relocation of the softball field as part of the Hingham High School Fields Project, and twenty thousand dollars from the community preservation general reserve for addition to the Community Preservation Committee's Administrative Fund. Is there further debate? Hearing none, we come to vote. This requires for its adoption a simple majority. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye!
All opposed, no. That is a unanimous vote. We now come to Article Twelve. Article Twelve, as Mr. Coughlin has just advised us, relates to the proposed appropriation of one point one million dollars to address the Old Derby Street project. The recommended motion of the advisory committee is set forth at page thirty-five of your warrant booklet. Is there discussion? Mr. Collins. Mark Cullings from the Historical Society.
Mark Cullings, forty-four Spring Street, speaking for the Historical Society. I'm going to take a, just a few minutes, it's late, to talk about the society's plans to create the Hingham Heritage Museum and Visitor Center at the building we know as Old Derby Academy on Lower Main Street. Is this better? All right. Thank you. With passage of this article, we'll take a major step toward creating an important new educational, cultural, and economic asset for our town. We'll be using CPA Act funds for an ambitious historical preservation project that will make Hingham an even more attractive place to visit, to live, and raise our families. Old Derby Academy was built in eighteen eighteen, nearly two hundred years old. We call our OD, sitting high on a hill overlooking Hingham Square, she looks essentially the same today as she looked here in the eighteen sixties. She was one of America's oldest school buildings. Hingham's boys and girls went to school there for, until the mid nineteen sixties. She also hosted town meetings and other community gatherings for over a generation, so she's not only part of our history, she made history. As a matter of fact, in eighteen thirty-two, at a town meeting in Derby Hall, the third floor of the building, voters agreed to acquire a property for a town farm. An article is going to be discussed later in this meeting about creating a monument to those who were buried on the land acquired at that meeting in unmarked graves. It's likely that everyone here has been to at least some kind of function at OD. The society has, in nineteen sixty-six, when Derby Academy no longer needed her, a group of concerned citizens, bought her for the Historical Society and likely saved her from demolition. The society has now owned and maintained her for nearly fifty years, and the time has come for her to take on a new and more, more important role in our town. Now, most of you know the ground floor, the front entrance, and the second-floor ballroom, but it's likely that only some of you know about the third floor, where all those town meetings took place. Derby Hall now houses the society's archives. The collections are large. They number over twelve thousand items. Some examples. So, we're offering a new museum for Hingham. And also a visitor's center. At the same time, to establish a visitor's center for the town, because Old Derby actually is one and has been one. Thousands of people now visit the gift shop every year, hundreds of them walk up that driveway, which is about to change, looking for information, for guidance, for directions, and yes, to use our bathrooms. So, here's the plan. We want to preserve and restore the original building. Sorry. Preserve and restore the original building and create, in the second-floor ballroom, the museum's main exhibition hall. The exhibitions will be in movable cases that will allow repositioning or removal so that OD can still host the kinds of functions we've all become used to. The ground floor will be the visitor's center, and it will house the, and expanded gift shop. The entire building will be fully eighty-eight compliant. And there are going to be mechanical, infrastructure-important, important infrastructure improvements that are necessary. Currently, there is no sprinkler system, which puts the building and our town's collective history at risk. A fire suppression system is critical. The building is, has electric heat, will convert to gas.
You have one minute.
The current sanitary system is a cesspool, will hook up to the town sewer, and will install an efficient HVAC system to, for the care and preservation of our collections as well as for the comfort of our guests. And we're going to add a modest addition off the rear and make landscaping improvements. There's a photo of, there are additional improvements that are not included in Article Twelve. They are important to the overall subject, the overall project. The Main Street staircase is not included, landscaping improvements are not included, and the total cost of the project is two point nine million dollars. We're asking for a one point one million dollar grant from CPA funds to help us with the CPA-eligible building and remodeling. We ask you to support Article Twelve. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I recognize Bob Curley on behalf of the Community Preservation Committee. Mr. Curley?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bob Curley, One Gris Mill Lane. I speak this evening as the vice chair and of the CPC and as the project manager of the Hingham Heritage Museum and Visitor Center project for the last two years. The CPC has vetted the Hingham Heritage Museum and Visitor Center project through a process involving multiple site visits, plan reviews, reviews of construction cost, reviews of construction cost estimates, scrutiny by the advisory committee, they're a tough sell, and the Board of Selectmen, and through multiple public meetings. The benefits to this town, of this project to the town have been explained in detail by Mr. Cullings. In the view of the CPC, the principal benefits include the preservation of Old Derby Academy, one of the crown jewels of Hingham history, the creation of a museum-quality repository for significant historical documents and artifacts, economic benefit to the downtown area, and probably most importantly, educational benefit to people of all ages, but especially our students and families. This project has been unanimously approved by the CPC, the Board of Selectmen, the advisory committee, the Historical Commission, and the Development and Industrial Council. The CPC's funding recommendation is for fifty percent of the qualified historic preservation costs of the project. The balance of the qualified costs and substantially more will be the responsibility of the Hingham Historical Society. This project represents one of the best of a public-private partnership ideas and the kind of private leverage for essentially a public benefit that the CPC has always looked for. Upon approval by this town meeting, the CPC will enter into a grant agreement with the Hingham Historical Society. There will also be a memorandum of understanding with the Board of Selectmen. The grant agreement and, sorry for the volume, the grant agreement and memorandum will include the following elements. A, a historical preservation restriction to assure in perpetuity the preservation of Old Derby. B, a provision that the funds authorized by this article will not be due and payable until the Historical Society has raised its share of the funds needed. The funds will then only be expended against properly documented invoices for work performed. C, a club act provision so that in the unlikely and unanticipated event of the sale of Old Derby or a casualty loss, the town would have the right to recover all or some of its investment depending on the circumstances. And D, provisions for a project schedule and performance. The grant agreement and memorandum of understanding will be reviewed by Town Real Estate Council. The recommendation for bonding for this project is the first time Hingham CPC has made a bonding recommendation. The, the Community Preservation Act specifically authorizes bonding, and over half of other CPA communities in the Commonwealth have authorized bonding for over one hundred and forty CPC projects. The CPC has recommended the issuance of bonds because of the extraordinary and exceptional value it sees in this unique project. The CPC sees a bonding recommendation as an appropriate way to make extraordinary projects possible, but anticipates that any bonding recommendation will be a rare event made only because of extraordinary value. The repayment of the bonds will come from the CPA revenue stream that Mr. Coughlin explained earlier and will not increase taxes. Let me repeat that. This does not involve a proposal that is going to increase taxes. Every year, the CPA receives approximately a million dollars of funds.
You have one minute.
And needs to set aside ten percent of that for historic preservation. It is essentially that amount or slightly more that would be used to pay the bonds on an annual basis from this existing revenue stream. The CPC will still have eighty-five percent or more of its annual revenues available for other projects. The expenditure of these CPA funds will result in our town having a Hingham Heritage Museum and Visitor Center, which will serve the town and the public for generations, and we ask for your vote approving this terrific project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there further debate? If not, we come to vote on Article Twelve. Article Twelve, since it involves borrowing, requires for its adoption a two-thirds majority. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed, no. It is a unanimous vote. Now, what I would like to do, and bear with me for a minute, is I will not run past eleven o'clock, so unless you have a train to meet, we have a few more items that I am confident we can handle reasonably expeditiously, and they are focused on the Selectmen's project to reduce the tax burden. Article fourteen is a two-thirds majority item because it requires for its, for its approval, two-thirds under the state law that relates to appropriations from a stabilization fund, and similarly, fifteen. Laura Burns for the Board of Selectmen, please.
Laura Burns, ninety-six Hershey Street for the Board of Selectmen. Excuse me. Several of the next articles address the Selectmen's Program for Tax Relief. What you see on screen is a graph relating to the average property tax bill over time. This is not a picture of the entire tax bill, but only the portion of it that relates to building projects which have been excluded from Proposition Two and a Half. In other words, borrowing costs which the citizens have voted to fund by overriding the legal restriction on the growth of property taxes. As you can see, following the approval of the middle school building project, this portion of your tax bill was expected to increase sharply in January of two thousand and fifteen, an average increase of about three hundred and twenty dollars per household. The amount declines over time because we pay principal each year, resulting in declining interest owed each year thereafter, but that means the biggest impact is on year one. The Board of Selectmen has been evaluating a variety of methods for mitigating the impact. At last year's town meeting, we requested, and you approved, several expansions of tax exemptions and credits for the neediest among us. Today, we request approval for a tax relief program which directs revenue from the local meals tax to offset the coming property tax increases for everyone. When town meeting adopted the local meals tax surcharge in two thousand and ten, we projected the revenue to be roughly a quarter of a million a year. As you can see, the funds have been coming in at a much greater clip at this point with the economic recovery, more than twice what was projected. When we proposed the adoption of the meals tax, we indicated that it was intended not to simply flow into the operating budget. Instead, it would be preserved for special projects. At the time, I suggested that I would like to see At the time, I suggested that I would like to see it used to offset property taxes, and that's the proposal before us today. Town meeting voted in 2011 and 2012 to put meals tax receipts in a stabilization fund for later use. In addition to the amounts in that fund, meals tax revenue has accumulated since the last town meeting, and it is currently in the general fund. Our proposal is simply to use the meals tax revenue to lower the property tax rate in 2015. This graph shows the improvement accomplished by that. The red line is the same line as from the first slide, showing the coming increase. The blue line represents savings which have already been achieved on the middle-school project, first by the cost of the project ultimately coming in at $58 million instead of the $62 million which was appropriated, and secondly, from savings and interest costs due to the town's extremely favorable reception in the bond market. The green line shows what the trend would be if, in addition, we applied meals tax revenue to lowering the property tax rate. The result, including previous savings, would be a change in the projected average increase from $320 per household to $167 per household. Doesn't eliminate the sting, but it does help. In order to achieve this, we would need to, first, pass Article Thirteen, which would dedicate the meals tax revenue received last year, currently in the general fund, to lowering the tax rate in 2015. Article Fourteen would dedicate the funds from previous years, which are currently in the stabilization fund, to the same purpose. And at next year's annual town meeting, we would need to dedicate the meals tax revenue received between now and then to the same purpose. We can't allocate those funds now because we haven't received them. Those three actions would smooth off the top of the upcoming bump to the degree that you see here. The Board of Selectmen hopes you will approve this use of the meals tax fund this year and next year. Article Fifteen is the same article we have each year, which appropriates funds from the previous sale of town property to lowering the tax rate. Article Sixteen and Article Seventeen relate to the Tax Work Off Program, which is available to needy citizens who work for the town in exchange for a reduction of their property taxes. The majority of the slots in this program are set aside for senior citizens. This is an extremely effective program, but what we found is that as citizens age, sometimes they are unable to continue to take advantage of this program due to inability to work. Article Sixteen, proposed by the Department of Elder Services, will allow the program beneficiary to designate someone else to perform the work for them. Could be a family member, neighbor, boy or girl scout, student performing community service, but adoption of this article might prevent a citizen from losing access to this program just when they need it the most. Finally, Article Seventeen, proposed by the Department of Veteran Services, establishes a similar tax work-off program for qualified veterans. The Board of Selectmen urges you to approve Articles Thirteen, Fourteen, Fifteen, Sixteen, and Seventeen. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there further debate? If not, we come to vote on Article Thirteen. The recommended motion of the Advisory Committee is set forth at page thirty-six. All in favor, please say "aye."
Aye!
All opposed, no. It's a unanimous vote. Article Fourteen requires for its adoption a two-thirds majority. The recommended motion of the Advisory Committee is set forth in your books at page thirty-six. There being no further discussion, we come to vote. All in favor, please say "aye."
Aye!
All opposed, no. It's a unanimous vote. Article Fifteen requires for its adoption a two-thirds majority. The recommended motion of the Advisory Committee is set forth at page thirty-six of your books. There being no further debate, all in favor, please say "aye."
Aye!
All opposed, no. Article Sixteen is the article that Mrs. Burns just spoke to about a surrogate to perform work on the Tax Work Off Program. It requires for its adoption a majority vote. All in favor, please say "aye."
Aye!
All opposed, no. That too is unanimous vote. Article Seventeen is the program that Laura Burns just spoke of to allow veterans to participate in a work-off program as described in that article and the affirmative motion of the Advisory Committee. All in favor, please say "aye."
Aye!
All opposed, no. I have you for three more minutes. Article Eighteen. Article Eighteen is one we see each year. It is to appropriate receipts from the municipal light plant. It requires for its adoption a majority. Is there discussion? Seeing none, we come to vote. All those in favor, please say "aye."
Aye!
Opposed, no. Article Nineteen, again, is one we see each year. This would authorize the continuation of a revolving fund in the Town Building Department. The Board of Selectmen recommends this vote, as does the full complement of the Advisory Committee. Is there discussion? Seeing none, we come to vote. This requires for its adoption a majority. Do we have, all in favor, please say "aye."
Aye!
Opposed, no. It's a unanimous vote. Article Twenty, again, an annual article, would continue the authorization, or the authorize, rather, the continuation of a revolving fund in the town's Elder Services Department. I need to read only one change in line one, two, three, four, five of the recommended motion, which begins, "The town authorizes the establishment." You should strike the word "establishment," insert the word "continuation." It is a pre-existing fund. The Board of Selectmen and the Advisory Committee recommend adoption. If there is no discussion, we will come to vote. All in favor, please say "aye."
Aye!
Opposed, no. And last for tonight, Article Twenty-One. Article Twenty-One is a place saver, and happily, we are having a recommended motion from the Advisory Committee, that there be no action on this article. All in favor of the committee's recommendation of no action, please say "aye."
Aye!
All opposed, no. So we will adjourn for the night. I thank you for your attention. We started at seven, and we finished at 11:00. But before, before we move out, I think we did a wonderful job tonight on some very contentious and difficult matters. I think we showed the kind of community we are, that we can engage in civil discourse, thoughtful debate, and ultimately, in an exercise of what the scholars call civic virtue, do things for the greater good of the community. I would like to begin tomorrow, as we did tonight, in a timely fashion. I think that one of the reasons that our meetings have begun to start later and later is because they start later and later, and people know, as Linda Port's article, or letter to the editor in the Journal, said, "I go home, I have dinner, because I figure we're not going to start on time." So if enough of us make a commitment to start on time, as Yogi Bear would say, we will. So tomorrow, we're going to start with Article Twenty-Two. And Article Twenty-Two, as you know, relates to the potential acquisition of the Recreation Park Drive property. It is a substantial undertaking for the community. It is proposed to borrow or appropriate $3.75 million to purchase that property up in the Recreation Park Drive area. It will require for its adoption a two-thirds majority. So we're going to start with a car chase, so you want to show up on time, and hopefully we'll start at seven and complete our business at a reasonable hour tomorrow evening. We're adjourned until tomorrow at 7:00.